Good morning, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting to order for Thursday, March 2, two thousand and twenty-three. It's nine o'clock. Lion County Board of County Commissioners. Today's agenda, actions will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public, any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of County Commissioners convening as other boards, members of the Board of County Commissioners also serves as the Liquor Board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. This meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. Good possibility that's going to happen today. A roll call. I have all commissioners in chambers, and we're going to stand for the indication given by John Poundstone of Joy Church.
Good morning. Heavenly Father, we're so grateful that we get to come before you, that you are present with us. We ask your divine hand over this meeting, that you provide great stewardship as these, as this board considers the many moves involved with money and property and the assets that you have provided for us. Specifically this morning, I pray for the state legislature, I pray for wisdom and prudence as they convene and meet, and I specifically ask you to protect Lion County from unfounded mandates, onerous, or regulations and laws that go against our core values. So, Father, thank you again for this meeting. Please guide us and direct us. In Jesus's name, I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands by the nation under God, in its soul, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item, but before the board takes any action. So, at this point, do we have any beginning public participation? Yes, if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the podium there and signing in and stating your name for the record, and I will start your timer.
Yes, my name is Jim Denning. My wife and I reside at number one real Vista here in Yarrington. I'm here today to address a problem that's been ongoing for the last five years about twenty Palomino. I'm sure that most of you are familiar with it. That problem is ongoing, and it seems to be some confusion about what entities are involved and what they can do and what they can't do. And I'm referring to the district attorney, the sheriff, the code enforcement, and county commissioner. I'm here to suggest that these four entities get together and form a committee between themselves, have raised a plan that we can deal with these people. This is ongoing illegal activity, and it's not just in our area, it's throughout the county. And the Yarrington as a whole, trying to grow this community, is getting a really bad reputation. I've heard from people that I know in Reno, Incline Village, around other areas, that they don't want to come down here to live because it's so drug-infested. And the prior administration as sheriff was not very cooperative in what we needed to do. It hadn't have been for three or four of the deputies in that under him that took this upon themselves to do. We would have no peace and quiet over there. The last year has not been too bad, but it's escalating again. And this guy gets out of jail, rolls right on home, and within a half hour, forty-five minutes, there's traffic. And these people are milling around, walking around. They're vagrant. They stay down there. There's been a fire there. My understanding that it's been red-tagged, and there's not supposed to be anybody in there, living there, or staying there, except for the owners, with one of which is the prominent dealer. And I'd like for you folks to get together as a group or form a committee and see what we can do to deal with this, because it's going to get out of hand here again. And I appreciate your time. And my name is Jim Denning. Phone number is seven seven five four four five nine zero five two. And if you have any questions or anything like that, I'd appreciate your calling. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Do you have any other public comment?
Good morning, members of the community, members of the commission. My name's Eric Allison. I've been a member of Mason Valley Community for about twenty-three years now. I'm the owner of Sunrise Ranch on Miller Lane, Lux Lavender, which is on Miller Lane, SE Properties. I'm the president of the Great Basin Lavender Association, and I'm an operations manager for probably the largest farming operation in Mason Valley, which is Perry and Sons. Sorry, a little nervous to speak in front of people. I stand before you with great concern regarding the massive amount of revenue that's being lost, you know, within the community. Extremely unsafe driving conditions. The disrespecting of private property, the ignorant littering, the severely increased deaths of local wildlife, you know, due to, you know, this is the traffic being awful. Mainly because of the excessive traffic that's being diverted down Miller Lane instead of coming through town on one of our local farm roads, Miller IAs, Miller Lane, Iasi Lanes, P Hendricks, all the farming properties that are personally owned, as well as government-owned property out there, Mason Valley Wildlife Refuge Area. It's become our diverted traffic, non-local traffics, garbage can, super speedway, being heavily soiled human feces, feminine products, bags of fast food products from places that aren't even in our area, Starbucks, Burger King, Taco Bell, AMPM, all just getting thrown in our irrigation ditches that are out there. So roughly five years ago, you'd be hard pressed to see a deer dead on Miller Lane. It was one, two a year. Now it's every week. I mean, our wildlife is taking huge hit out there on Miller Lane. You know, that's not good. I understand there are massive signs stating no semi-trucks, but they still make the turn. They head down Miller Lane. You know, they're crossing a bridge that probably wasn't designed for heavy trucks. They're obviously on a road that's not designed for the heavy trucks. My assumption, you know, I don't have the proof of that. The sides of the roads are being ripped apart. You know, you can't even hardly stay on the road out there. It's a very treacherous road when another large vehicle is coming down the road. The unsafe driving conditions that our local farmers, community people, and ranchers are facing is unacceptable. It's very unacceptable. I mean, you, almost every day, you're about, you're going to get run off the road out there. Yes, the flashing stoplights, the flashing caution lights, the rumble strips. You know, they haven't slowed the accidents down. They don't slow the people down. I mean, they just, they're blinded by what Google is telling them to do, and they're going for it. You know, they'll bypass Miller Lane, they'll make a turn and go back. It really doesn't matter.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
If you have public comment, please line up over here on the, next to the podium.
Good morning. I'm David Brian. I happen to be Eric Allison's father-in-law. He's married to my daughter. I'm a rancher and born, raised, Yarrington. Third generation, my daughter's fourth. We have grandkids that are going to be fifth. We're going to be here. Okay, Miller Lane is a problem, and I agree with everything that Eric said. The one thing that I'm here for, but I didn't hear Eric mention was, at the end of Pete Hendricks, you have rumble strips and blinking light, and I think that might have helped some. On ninety, ninety-five and Miller Lane, I fixed that fence three times. One and another time, the state helped me fix the fence. It ran through four times in less than a little over too much. And I really appreciate the county considering putting a blinking stoplight for that peak, because drunks go right through, go right through, and wipe out the other side. Somebody's going to get hurt badly. And again, I think, I want to reiterate, I think there's way too much traffic for the infrastructure that you have there. The sides of the roads are breaking down. I personally have been run off the road more than once. The speed limit is not being observed, and I might even be part of that problem myself. But I'll admit to it. But, you know, the, the road is just has too much traffic for what's there. And I know you guys are into the gun on that. I don't have any suggestions, just want to make you aware of the problem. I very much want to thank you for your service and the time that you allotted for me to take, listen to me. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll be sure you do sign in up there, so we do have it for the record.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Thanks for taking time to listen to us. My name's Charles Holden. I'm here to back up Jim. I'm at Three Ashley, Ashley Road, just his neighbor on the other side of the creek. The problem's been ongoing since I built in two thousand and seven. This problem's been ongoing. Sheriff's done their best to eliminate it. They've worked well with us over the years, listened to us usually. The fire that just happened a year or so ago stopped it. Obviously, the elements that frequent the area have moved on to some other locations around the corner, but they're back in this location. If any of you have the time, drive down there and look at the property. I know it's a lot, you don't have much time, but make the time, and you'd understand why we're here every meeting. They have a right to go and work on the property. They have a right to bring it up to the code. They don't have a right to live there. You know, a wild option is go to them, confront them and say, look, here's a piece of BLM out there. Go do your drug deals out there. But this one o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the morning, speeding, most of the vehicles aren't registered. That's a whole nother subject. I'm just here to back up them. It's just, I pay eight or nine thousand dollars a year in property taxes on my, on my real estate. Big portion of it is from that piece of property. We have no road service. We don't get our road graded. We don't, either the Matt, I, you know, and the schools and all, I admit that. But it would, to give them the right to come in and open the property back up, if you're going to do that, make sure they do it to the letter of the law. And I've been in construction forty years. There's nothing down there that's still a letter of law. So, anyway, I'm here to back you. Thank you for taking your time. I really appreciate you listening to me.
Good morning. My name is Omar Lopez. I'm here to talk on what Eric Allison and David shared on. I work for Perry and Sons also. I was out there driving that road daily for my job, for my position. I would count at least a thousand to fifteen hundred vehicles a day driving P Hendricks, Miller Lane, heading out towards ninety-five A, and I feel like those vehicles should be driving through town, because I would see them in the ditch, using the restroom for the restroom. If they drove through town, the thing is, Google says them that way. They're not taking that route because they chose to. Google is sending them that way because of Google Maps. If we were to drop that speed limit out there, Google Maps will now redirect them through town, and they could stop at Maverick, McDonald's, Roasters, Jackson's, use the restroom there, probably buy something, probably get some gas, and we can keep that tax money here. The way I feel is revenue lost by having all these people bypassing Yarrington. Can they stop at Hawthorne or Golden Gate? And what are we getting? We're missing thousand, fifteen hundred people driving through, vehicles driving through daily. I was out there for five years, and I would count vehicles when I was out there at NIFWIP, and they were just driving by, throwing their trash out, running us off the road. I don't know how many times I had to pull over, just to make sure they, was passing at sixty-five, and I'm going fifty, you know, I'm five over already. So, it's congested. It's bad. I know we have money set aside to fix that curve, but I'm sure there's something else we could do. I appreciate you guys. I just want to bring that up because it's revenue lost on our end. I feel like Darrington could be profiting a little bit from people driving through. It's a lot of vehicles. Appreciate you guys. I hope you guys have a good day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Omar. I believe that's the public comment. Anything on Zoom? No hands? Okay. For possible action review and adopt the agenda, do I have a motion to adopt our agenda written? Any changes?
Motion to adopt agenda.
Okay. Second, Commissioner Keller, motion to adopt, and Commissioner Henderson, second. All those in favor, say aye.
We have comment.
Oh, comment. Yes, go ahead.
If I'm not mistaken, I think Lion County wanted to get pushed to the end, Lion County School District wanted to get pushed to the end of the agenda today. Is that right? Oh, no? Okay, then I'm, I'm good.
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
We have five zero, and motion for the agenda will stand. We have a time certain, time certain at nine AM for possible action public hearing to consider and approve Lion County's proposal to exchange real property owned by Lion County located at one fifty-eight Garnet Circle Mound House for real property owned by Central Lion County Fire Protection District located at fifty-six Red Rock Road Mound House, all for the purpose of establishing a community center in Mound House. If approved, the board can authorize the chair to execute any documents necessary to complete the exchange. And we did read this prior. So, do I have any comments from the board? Actually, we have a comment from the county manager. Go ahead.
Oh, no comment. I was just going to mention that, as you already stated, that this is the second hearing on this. This is the time for the public to speak on it if they're opposed or again, or therefore against it. So, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Commissioner comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Henderson.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to voice my, my thanks for everyone who's worked on this proposal. It's been a long time coming. It's the best solution for, for us to get a community center in Mound House. And I am, like I said, I want to thank everybody that worked on this, and that's the way things are supposed to work.
Thank you. Totally agree. And Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chair Hockaday. I would agree with Commissioner Henderson, and also I just want to thank Central Lion Fire for, for working and being a community partner in that. And if we had to start a, what year was it promised, or started working on?
I want to say it was the late eighties or early nineties, maybe.
So, we've been working on this for the, since the late eighties. So, I think, starting from a new building up, it is not going to happen in our lifetime. So, I think this is a great solution, and, and I hope they enjoy their community center. Thank you.
Okay, that's only thirty years. That's pretty quick for government. So, having heard the comments here, do we have any public comment? I see nothing. Anything on Zoom? Nothing? Hey, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Lion County's proposal to exchange real property owned by Lion County located at one fifty-eight Garnet Circle Mound House for real property owned by Central Lion County Fire Protection District located at fifty-six Red Rock Road Mound House, all for the purpose of establishing a community center in Mound House. And, and if, if passed, I'll authorize the chair to execute any documents necessary to complete the exchange.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have a five zero for approval? Now, we do have a closed session, I believe, at this point. So, everybody will have to just kind of hang in there. We're going to adjourn to the county manager's office. Everybody else can maintain their seats or take a little break. Okay, the meeting's back in order, nine fifty-five. We are down to item seven, presentation of awards and a recognition of accomplishments. Do you have any? Andrew, do we have any awards or recognitions?
None today. Thank you.
Okay. Item eight, commissioners and county manager reports. Let's go with Commissioner Hendricks.
Well, after our last meeting, you and Scott and I went down and attended the ribbon cutting at the Boys and Girls Club here in town for the younger kids, and they built an amazing facility, and it opened at full capacity. And I also attended the Silver Springs and Stagecoach Advisory Awards.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few items to report on. On the twenty-third of February, I attended Nevada Association of Counties Public Lands and Natural Resources Committee meeting. One item that was discussed was Assembly Bill one oh two, which is basically a prohibition on compositions for the takings of covered animals. They're talking about outlawing coyote shooting contests, and some, some of the counties have some concerns with that because of the, the overpopulation of coyotes and the damages that they do. And then Sloopack and NACO both submitted comments to BLM on their solar PEIS statement. One of the concerns is that we're getting into these big solar fields built in Nevada, and all the energy is going to California. So, they want to talk about that. I also attended the Nevada Association of Counties Board of Directors meeting on the twenty-fourth. It's the first board of directors meeting I've ever seen where there was one commissioner actually in the building, and everybody else zoomed in because of all the snow that day. And it was pretty good. See, there, there was, yeah, obviously discussion about the legislature there as well, and updates on the NACO conference, and then attended the Western Nevada Legislative Coalition meeting on February twenty-fourth, and again, talked about different, different legislation. Then yesterday, I actually had the, the privilege, I guess, a, a period before the Senate Government Affairs Committee. They were hearing Senate Bill eighty-one, which is the bill that would expand the reporting that the, the five counties that have to do. So, was there, Mr. Haskin was there as well, and we both testified on the record in opposition of that. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chair Hockday. Just a few things. First of all, my condolences to those that lost their lives in the plane crash, the first responders, pilot, medical staff, the patient, his loved one, and all those families that were affected. My deepest sympathies. Also attended the friendly council meeting last night via Zoom for heading to the Stagecoach Advisory, and appreciate the police and North Lion Fire reports, and wishing Mayor McIntyre well as they transition and go through some growing pains. Regarding the Stagecoach Advisory, appreciated the invite, Mr. Haskin and, and Mr. Homestead did a great job presenting on numerous items. And Central Lion Fire was there as well, and, and committed to continued community partnerships, which was great to hear. And they also shared some of the things that they've been doing, including the Mound House property exchange that we approved earlier. Andrew had a great presentation on the lands bill, what it is, kind of what it isn't, and, and answered most of their questions, I thought, very well. So, thank you for that. Sheriff Pope and his staff had a very informative presentation on the, on the, on that tragic plane crash, drug bus, patrol plan, staffing, and more, and did a great job as well. So, I was very impressed with the number of people at the Stagecoach Advisory. It was very well attended. And that is all I have. Chairman Hockaday, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Keller.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, my condolences go out also for the crew on the, on that flight. I attended several of the meetings. Most of my meetings were with physical therapy, so they could torture me. But I was at the Legislative Coalition Meeting, and caught a couple other Zoom meetings, so I could sit at home and, and stay in a wonderful sling. Other than that, I don't have any other comments. I'll save them for the end. Do we have any elected official reports? Or county manager? You did have something. Okay.
I'll, I'll just keep it really quick, because I think Andrew Haskin, I came in for the record. I think most of the stuff that I was going to touch on has already been touched on. Again, want to extend our condolences to the families of the victims of the plane crash. I was out there Saturday morning with the Sheriff's Department and Central Lion Fire. Really sad situation. Everybody that was unseen and involved did an amazing job. And so, it was just, just a tough situation. As was already mentioned yesterday, I attended Senate Government Affairs Committee meeting on SB eighty-one and testified in opposition to that. That was the, one of the bills that was before this board, the last EOCC meeting, and the board took a position against. So, we'll be tracking that and see where that goes. And then I also attended the Stagecoach Advisory Board meeting last night, and gave a presentation on the Stagecoach Community Center, and actually, Mr. Homestead gave the presentation on the, the community center, and was there to back him up on that. But then we also had a discussion on the, the lands bill, and just kind of providing some information. As Commissioner Jacobson said, what it is and what it isn't. So, with that, you know, I've also been working on trying to get some applications in for some additional code. So, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in my presentation later.
Thank you. Questions? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I do apologize for missing the Stagecoach meeting last night, but the South three ninety-five roads were treacherous, and I figured I wouldn't be here today if I tried to get back last night. So, missed that one. Move on to appointed official reports. Oh, I missed nine. Elected official reports.
Morning, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Awesome, Mark.
What I handed you is our, our ongoing average response times that now include the month of February. I did make copies there in the lobby for anyone interested. As you can see by this report, response times are remaining steady. Some have significant decreases, some have slight increases, but on average, they're holding well, and they're in much better shape than they were in two thousand and twenty-two. uh, they're holding well and they're in much better shape than they were in twenty twenty-two. Um, that being said, it's been a busy couple weeks since last informed you guys what's going on. Uh, we had a, what was reported as an active shooter with the brothel. Uh, multitude of agencies, uh, from Western Nevada responded being it was a put out as an active shooter, uh, so the response was hardening. Other sheriffs, sheriff's administrations, other departments responded, gave us a hand with that. It was resolved peacefully with no, uh, property damage. Uh, no injuries to suspect or law enforcement personnel. Um, everybody knows about the, uh, plane crash, uh, and Stagecoach and like I said, if you could keep, uh, their families, um, and the people affected and your thoughts and prayers are very greatly appreciated. Um, they were treated with honor on scene. Uh, we provided a flagjapping, uh, ceremony on scene for the first responders and, uh, Lyon County Sheriff's Office led to procession, um. All the way to Reno through the Medical Examiner's Office where where they were delivered with honor, so. Other than that, that's about all I have to report.
Thank you. Um, any questions from commissioners?
Uh, Chairman Hockday, just, uh, thank you for that procession that you provided, those, uh, people that, uh, were killed in the plane crash, heard a lot of good things, um, and, uh, tough situation, but, uh, again, well done.
Again, Sheriff Pope, thank you and appreciate the, um, the update on response time. Uh, Commissioner Keller?
And I wanted to thank you for the responses you've been given, notifying the board and everything else. It really helps us out when there's rumors floating around in the community and have the information right away to tell them where to go or or do everything. So thanks a lot for that.
Thank you, Sheriff. Now we'll go to appointed official reports. Mister Foley.
Joshua Lee, Lyon County Council for the record. I'll be brief because I know you have quite a bit in front of you today. And just wanted to update the board that we have. On March sixth, we have the remodel of the justice complex going out to bid. And so we're anticipating hopefully towards the end of May, beginning of June, uh, to be able to start construction on that project. So just wanted to give you the heads up on that if you hear anything. The second thing is, is, uh, county manager and myself met with all the various department heads. It was kind of fun to meet with them, um, get to meet with some new people that have come in since the last time. As part of that, there is one item that we took a look at and we think we should probably bring that back for approval prior to the budget. And that has to do with the salaries in the district attorney's office, uh, for the attorneys. We're taking a look at what's going on in the area around us, um. Carson City District Attorney's Office, it looks like is unionizing. They're doing salary studies right now. We don't want to lose any of our attorneys for a number of reasons. Not that we want to lose any of our good people. Um, but some of the, some of the things in the budget discussion with the district attorney's office, we felt it'd be better to bring back to you sooner rather than later, uh, shouldn't have much of an immediate fiscal impact as far as the budget because we've had some vacancies there. But just so you know, we'll probably bring that back to you next. So if you have any questions, you probably know where to find me.
Questions?
No questions.
No, okay, Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you, Chairman Hockday. Did you great work meeting with department heads, uh, we have, as proved again last night at Stagecoach Advisory and and at other times, obviously, that we have incredible departments and getting their feedback. And, uh, bringing us exactly what they're telling you is is, uh, good leadership. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Advisory Board Reports. We have any Advisory Board on Zoom? Do we have the advisor pick? Go ahead.
Hi, um, I'm Amanda Bernard. I'm the Vice Chair of the Stagecoach Advisory Board. Uh, the chair was, uh, absent last night, so I served as the chair and, um, I think we already had a pretty good report of what happened, but I did want to thank, um, Commissioners Hendricks and Dixon for attending last night. We appreciate that. We did have a good turnout. And I did also want to thank Andrew Haskin and Doug Homestead and Sheriff Pope and the Central Lion County for doing the presentations on. We do appreciate that. Um, it was a well-attended meeting. Like I said, um, I think it was great that Central, um, Lyon County Fire was willing to work with the groups that use the community center because there were some upset individuals there about it, and I think that vastly helped. And we look forward to, um, the public meetings with the public lands bill too, um, the upcoming lands bill. There was some concern there. And just finally, um, the citizens of Stagecoach, our hearts go out to the victims of the plane wreck and also the first responders. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Advisory Board Reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Uh, action will be taken on all items. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board of county commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Uh, item twelve for possible action will approve the, uh, um, items twelve A through fourteen B are on the consent agenda. Do I have any comments or removals?
Yeah, Miss Mister Chair, I like to, uh, pull item twelve B to be heard separately.
Item twelve B to be heard separately. Any others?
Chairman Hockday, I'd like to, I think maybe we should pull twelve A because I'll need to abstain from that one.
Okay, uh, so do I have, uh?
Hockday, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, pulling twelve A and twelve B for further discussion, uh, but approving thirteen A, fourteen A and fourteen B as written.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson. Uh, all those in favor of the consent agenda items thirteen A through fourteen B being approved, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero and let's go back to twelve A for possible action approved the February second twenty twenty-three minutes, um, pulled by Commissioner Hendricks. And I believe it was just because you weren't here. Uh, I won't, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but go ahead.
I just want to pull that because I'll need to abstain because I was not on the board for these minutes.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion for twelve A?
Motion to approve twelve A.
Want to, do we want to prove each one of them? Right, so a motion to approve twelve A as listed based on what the abstain contention is.
Yes, as it, as it is.
No.
All right. By the second then?
Last second.
Okay, so we had the, uh, motion to approve twelve A, uh, and it's by, uh, Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Henderson, all those.
Mister Chair, we, uh, we got to do public comment.
Oh, public comment, okay. Just abstention on that, no public comment, good. Then then we'll do it. Motion to, uh, approve has been made. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And Commissioner Hendricks abstains. Twelve B. The possible action approved in February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes, twelve B was pulled for correction, I believe.
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson pulled that.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair. There is an an error on page eighteen of twenty of the minutes, item twenty-three. For agenda request, it reads that I requested a, an item at the next meeting. Presentation discussion of possible framework contract with the Corey Group, C O R E Y, that should read Porter Group, P O R T E R. Porter, P O R T E R. If there's no, no other comments.
I have a correction also on page four of the minutes, the second paragraph, um, where it talks about Commissioner Keller commented that Constock Comstock Mining have previously offered to bring in dirt from the mine in Silver City and do the work on expansion, but Silver Springs said no, and it should be Silver City.
Okay, so do we have any other comments on this? You have any public comment on this? And I'd like a a motion to, uh,
Motion to approve with both corrections.
To approve twelve B with the two corrections. That motion we've made.
Just made that motion.
Oh, second it.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Hendricks to approve twelve B with the two corrections. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, five zero to make that approved, um. And that should end that part of the consent agenda. Moving on to plan, planning consentage items, consent items. For possible action approval to release the improvement bond, accept the maintenance bond and accept the certification of completion for the Traditions Village One Phase Five Subdivision located in Dayton, Nevada. Do I have any comments from the board on item fifteen A?
Mister Chair, just to clarify, these are, um, consent items. Are you pulling them for discussion or um, that can be taken together as as concerned?
Yeah, I I figured since it's set for possible action, last time I tried to do the whole consent agenda, you said it's possible action. We had to have input, so, uh, public comment. Um, I have no problem with doing it as a, as a whole fifteen A and B if that's, uh, if we do it, then let's do it.
On these, yeah. Chairman Hockday, I'll make a motion that we approve fifteen A and fifteen B as written.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, a second by Commissioner Keller. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, five zero.
I'm sorry, Mister Chair, I think we got to go back and do public comment on that one.
Yeah. Thank you, may I have another? Any public comment on those two consent and I consent item, consent agenda items? Okay, right, I don't see any. We'll move on. Sixteen. A little slow. With one hand. Sixteen A for possible action to approve a conditional use permit request from Lux Solar Center LLC to allow a commercial solar generation facility on four parcels generally located between the Union Pacific Railroad tracks and Sierra Way in Wabaska North Mason Valley, A P N zero one four dash zero nine one dash zero two zero three and dash two zero dash two one in the RR twenty rural residential twenty acre minimum and L I dash R light industrial rural zoning districts, P L Z twenty twenty-two dash two ten. And we have the staff report, go ahead.
Good morning, uh, Bill Roth, Senior Planner. So your first planning item today is for Lux Solar. It's proposed conditional use permit. Uh, you can see the four subject parcels here, located in Wabiska, um. They are ranging from about a hundred twenty acres, a hundred twenty acres up to about fifteen hundred acres. The master plan designation is, you can see there in that table, and is primarily agriculture. There is one industrial property. And the, uh, the zoning that applies would be the Title Fifteen zoning, so RR twenty and light industrial. Uh, just an aerial view of those same properties. So again, if we look at the zoning, uh, that relates to those parcels, um, it allows for what is proposed as a conditional use permit. So that's a solar power generating facility commercial, and that requires approval of a conditional use permit for the districts. Um, the project that's proposed specifically is to use about eleven hundred acres out of the total twenty-four hundred acres to install a solar power generating facility. Um, it should be noted that a conditional use permit for this project, exactly as it's proposed today, was approved, uh, in twenty nineteen. Uh, but what happened was the link, uh, with, uh, envy energy upon which the project relies, uh, is not going to be installed actually until about twenty-eight, twenty-eight. Um, so the applicants came to the county to request an extension, uh, but unfortunately that previous permit had already expired. And so we're in a position now to, uh, have them apply for a brand-new permit. Um, except in this case, we'll, uh, have the validity go out, um, until about twenty thirty, I believe, to, uh, allow them to initiate the project once that envy energy, um, installation is in place. And again, as as previously mentioned, the C U P is required. I think the applicant, uh, is on, if there are any questions specifically about the Green Link project itself. Um, this is the proposed site plan, uh, is exactly the same as was, uh, proved back in twenty nineteen. And, uh, per the county code, uh, there are some findings that need to be made in regard to conditions for it. And this is just some highlights of the findings. Um, one of them within the master plan is the policy to support a diverse economic base, and so providing, uh, solar energy facility, uh, would would do just that. Uh, it does comply with all of the siding requirements, uh, in the Lyon County Code in regard to, uh, these commercial solar generating facilities. Um, during the period of construction, you know, there would be trucks going out there to install the panels. Uh, but after that, uh, it would just be a matter of, uh, you know, routine maintenance, uh, maybe once or twice a year. Uh, so there are conditions of approval with the permit and the staff report uh, to address road repair, uh, to get closely with, uh, Lyon County roads, uh, in in that regard during the construction period. Uh, again, once the facility is in place, it really wouldn't have any employees going out there on a regular basis, so it wouldn't have an impacted traffic flow. Um, and they would be subject to building permits. It should be noted that we did get a comment letter from the, uh, Walker Irrigation District. And basically that letter is, uh, was supportive of the project, but specifically wanted to, uh, make sure that condition of approval twelve remains in place, and that's a condition, uh, that was in the previous permit as well, and it basically requires the applicant to work with Walker River Irrigation District to ensure that the design, um, doesn't, uh, impact any of their existing easements for irrigation and that during. Um, so as I said, I think we, the applicant is on, uh, to answer any questions about Greenland, and that includes staff report.
Questions from commissioners?
I I do have a comment, um. We have so many of these now and technology changes. I'd like to see a mitigation bond attached as an additional condition to this project.
A mitigation bond in regard to, um, what's its decommission?
If, yes.
Okay. Okay, so in regard to that, um, we do have a condition of approval requiring, um, uh, that decommissioning, but we don't currently have a bond attached to that. So that would be as directed by the board to staff to work with the applicant to, um, put in place a bond.
I'd like to see that to ensure that they do perform on that.
And I think that is a good point because of the amount of, uh, hazardous waste that is produced when these things are at the end of their life. Uh, any other commissioners' comments?
Um, I would, Andrew Haskin for the record, I'd just like to make sure that the applicant is okay with that, that condition. Um, I believe they're on, um, if you could raise your hand, up, there we go.
Hi, good morning. My name is Thomas Gentry. Uh, I'm a manager of project development with Orsted on behalf of the applicant. Um, yeah, there is no issue on our end, uh, establishing a bond, uh, for decommissioning if that's something that the board would like to see.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Okay, look for a motion on item sixteen A.
Mister Chair, I would like to move that Board of Commissioners approved a request by Lux Solar LLC for a conditional use permit to allow a conditional solar energy generating facility in the RR twenty and the L I R zoning districts on four parcels of approximately two thousand four hundred sixty-two acres in total. Access by US ninety-five A between Union Pacific in total, accessed by US ninety-five A between Union Pacific Railroad tracks and Sierra Way and Wabaska Mason Valley, APN zero one four zero nine one zero two, dash zero three, dash two zero dash twenty-one. Based on the the findings, one A through G, and subject to the conditions one through sixteen, and to include the requirement for a bond as discussed.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
We have some, oh, sorry, Chairman Hockley, before. Just something triggered, so do we, we approved another solar field across the road from this, correct? Did we ask them to build a fence? And it is in there? I'm just making sure for the public record, though, that that it's apples to apples on these two projects.
Louis Carriola Senior Planner, Commissioner Jacobson, I wrote the report and presented that item. And Commissioner Keller at the time requested that at the time of construction that staff work with the applicant to potentially create some kind of screening along Highway ninety-five A, and that could take the form of, I believe what we discussed was landscaping, not a fence.
All right. I was just.
Yeah, no, you're on the right track.
I was going back, and my memory is what it used to be, thank you. That's all I had, thank.
Okay. And that comment was by Commissioner Jacobson. Okay, so we're back. If we do on track, I'll become it. Let's see, no public comment? And how about a motion?
We have it.
We have it. I already had public comment, so. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I do see one on on Zoom, I'm sorry.
We have one. By the Keller.
Sorry about that, I just had one comment, I know it's a public comment, so I'm not necessarily here to ask a question, even though it is one, but I just remember when we went through this before, and I'm not seeing it in there today, so maybe I'm dismissing it, about dust control, not only during construction, but once it's constructed, you know, they disturb all that dirt out there, and all we have is solar fields, and I thought that was talked about before, but I'm not seeing it in there today, so I'm just bringing it up.
Thank you. All right. So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor.
Well, can I bring up that question, I'd like that question to be answered. Well, I'll make it as a as a commissioner, I just want to know if the gravel, is that part of the construction?
So Andrew Haskin, Lyons County Manager for the record, so as with any construction project over five acres, they gotta get a permit through the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection, so NDP will be the one that regulates the air quality.
Okay, so that's answered.
Okay. I think we're ready for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so carries five zero. Sixteen B for possible action to approve a conditional use permit request from Lyon County School District to allow the addition of two office buildings on one parcel, APN zero one eight dash three five six dash zero one, and a shared parking area on two parcels, APN zero one eight dash three five six dash zero one and zero one eight dash three five six dash zero two, located to the west of the intersection of Spruce Avenue and Ramsey Weeks cutoff, south of US Highway fifty in Silver Springs and the RR five rural residential five acre minimum zoning district PLZ two zero two two dash one nine seven. The staff report on that.
Thank you, Bill Roth Senior Planner. Okay, so here are the subject parcels just off Ramsey Weeks cutoff on Spruce Avenue. It actually includes two parcels, which I'll talk about the next slide. So this is part of the larger Lyon County School District campus, includes the elementary school, middle school, and high school. You can see the two properties there in the red triangle. This is just a Google Street View, the existing buildings are on the leftmost parcel, and so those are also administrative buildings for the use of the school district. But that driveway that's shown there would remain, that has become a joint use driveway to be used by the parcel to the right, which would have the two new buildings that are proposed, I'll go into detail a little bit more. The zoning is RR five rural residential five acre minimum, and you know, educational uses require a conditional use permit in that zoning district. So in more detail here, the applicant's proposal is to construct two office buildings, and then to build out a shared parking area and make joint use of that existing driveway, and then that shared parking area would be used by the existing buildings, and then the two new buildings that are proposed, one thirty-six hundred square feet, the other about fourteen hundred square feet. So this is a site plan from the applicant, the two proposed buildings are shown there in yellow, you can see the property line, it would basically go between the shared parking that's proposed, there is a condition of approval for a joint or shared access easement, so that both properties can use the parking and benefit from that same driveway. And then the existing buildings there are in green. There was a comment about the whether the buildings in the area were temporary, this is from the from the regional, other community advisory board, rather, and I believe that was attached to the report, but basically those buildings that exist there now are allowed there to remain permanently, staff reviewed the previous staff report that was done for those items. There was also a comment in regard to road safety coming south on Ramsey Weeks and then taking a right onto screws, there's a ditch there, it is kind of a sharp turn, so it wasn't so much of a project specific comment, but it was something that the advisory board wanted to bring up. So this is just an elevation, this is basically characteristic of both the large building that's shown here and the smaller building, it'd be of a similar design, similar to what is already on on the adjacent site. So conditional use permit requires certain findings to be made, these are just some highlights, but the master plan has policies supportive of adequate school facilities, and the two buildings that are proposed would be for administrative office and then also for staff training in the second building. It is similar to existing uses, it's just part of the existing campus, adding two buildings so it'd be compatible with adjacent development. It wouldn't impact traffic flows, it uses the existing driveway, and likely the training with these, it wouldn't be exactly the same time as the school drop offs and whatnot. The size of buildings would limit the number of people that would be able to make use of it as well, they will require building permits to ensure public health and safety and welfare is met. Leave the applicants here as well, staffs available to answer any questions.
Okay. I do have a comment.
Commissioner comments? Commissioner Hendricks, Henderson, Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, we brought, you brought up the road design out there, which has always been a bad design, putting some thread and angle, instead of being right, that there's also another road that's in there that goes up the hill, continues on, so that even that dirt parking lot is a problem area across the way. So we, the traffic's getting more and more and more, and I just want to bring this up as a comment, I know it's not subject to that, but as a comment that we as a road department or something, look at addressing this, because it's just gonna get worse, especially if we're not on any growth in the area, we're gonna get more people at that school, and that's a safety factor, so I just want to bring that up as a comment.
Commissioner Jacobson?
I just want to comment that I think it's probably a great idea to start centralizing in the Silver Springs areas, entities like this, because it is a, it is a central location accessible to all the attendance areas in this case, and I think it's a very smart move to to again, centralize office space in the Silver Springs area.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller, you had another comment?
No, I'm just ready for a motion when you're ready, you have to do the public comment.
Yeah, public comment? See any public comment, nothing on Zoom, nothing in-house, so we'll move on then to a motion.
Make a motion to approve the conditional use permit request from Lyon County School District to allow the addition of two office buildings on one parcel, APN eighteen three five six oh one, and a shared parking area on two parcels, APN eighteen three five six oh one and eighteen three five six oh two, located in the west of the intersection of Spruce Avenue and Ramsey Weeks cutoff, south of Highway US fifty in Silver Springs and the RR rural residential five acre minimum zoning district. PLZ two oh two two one nine seven, based on the findings of A through G, subject to conditions of approval one through eight.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Jacobson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a five zero, and we'll move on to sixteen C. For possible action to approve the request for a zoning map amendment from Schaller Development LLC, care of project one, to change the zoning on nine parcels comprising approximately four hundred ninety-seven point five two acres south of US Highway fifty in Stagecoach from RR five, fifth rural residential district twenty acre minimum and RR two, second rural residential district two acre minimum to RR two rural residential two acre minimum, in accordance with the master plan designation of specific plan, APNs zero one five dash three six five dash zero one, zero one five dash three six five dash zero two, zero one five dash three six five dash zero three, zero one five dash three six five dash zero four, zero one five dash three seven one dash zero five, zero one five dash three seven one dash zero six. Zero one five dash three seven one dash zero seven, zero one five dash three seven one dash zero eight, zero one five dash four five one dash zero one, PLZ two zero two two dash two zero six. Okay. Commissioner discussion?
I'm gonna step outside just for a second, so you can continue on, I just want to make a note for the record that I'm leaving for a second.
Commissioner comment? Commissioner Hendricks?
I'd like to just hear the presentation.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and have the presentation. You know, if you had said something, I'm. Yes.
Thank you for that introduction, Louis Carriola Senior Planner presenting. So in that lengthy introduction, nine parcels were mentioned by APN, the subject parcels are located in Stagecoach, on the left is our vicinity map showing that they're on the the south southeast side of Highway fifty, the configuration of the parcels is shown on the right, and the total acreage is on the order of four hundred and ninety-one acres. Existing development on the site is dominated by the Dayton Valley turf operations, the circled areas, and on that eastern side, the arrows depict the current operations, and to the west of the subject site is the Churchill Rancho Estates, a residential development comprised of two acre lots. The character district for the master plan for all of Stagecoach and all of the subject parcels is rural, you'll note that in Lyon County, we have two character districts, typically rural and suburban, for the most part, rural character districts are characterized by not including the same level of urban services that would be public utilities. Typically. The master plan designation for all nine parcels is now specific plan, you may recall that a few months ago, that that parcel all the way to the east was changed to specific plan, all nine parcels are commonly owned, and per Title Fifteen or Development Code, any areas over one hundred and sixty acres that are proposed for master plan amendments do need to be designated as specific plan. Notably, the adjacent master plan designations are low density residential, that would be the Churchill Rancho Estates, the blocks in yellow, and then rural residential is that that blue gray color. So a lot going on in this slide, but this depicts the current zoning for the four hundred and ninety-seven acres. Now, I think it's notable to mention here that the applicant's submittal did only request zone change for that block of pink, the approximately three hundred and thirty-one acres, that is currently zoned RR RR five from Title Ten, as you know, through the zoning consistency matrix, with the adoption of twenty, of Title Fifteen in twenty eighteen, we also adopted the zoning consistency matrix, so we have to convert zoning districts, the current standards applicable to the Title Ten designation of RR five are from Title Fifteen's zoning designation of RR twenty, so it's rural residential twenty acres. The confusing part is Title Ten also had an RR two designation, rural residential or second rural residential district with a two acre minimum, so that that block on the south in teal is zoned RR two from Title Ten, and in the staff report, I, for consistency, drafted the report to reflect the zone change for all four hundred and ninety-seven acres to RR two, when in reality, that teal block, the one hundred and sixty acres already holds rural residential to development standards, so in reality, the zone change is only for the three hundred and thirty-one acres. I bring this up because if we look at the Churchill Rancho Estates, that's another map section of one hundred and sixty acres, meaning that we have two blocks of one hundred and sixty acres in this vicinity already with RR two zoning, I kind of just wanted to graphically depict what that entails, or what that implies in our requested zone change here, in other words, we have a block of three hundred and twenty acres with RR two zoning already in place, and I projected that block into that project area here in orange, just to demonstrate the area that would be changed is already, is just barely larger than the existing three hundred and twenty acres of RR two zoning that are already in this region. So this image depicts the proposed zone change for the entire area to rural residential two acre, it's notable to recognize that to the east, the applicable zoning is rural residential five acres, and then the pink areas are rural residential twenty. The findings for its own change are found in chapter fifteen to twenty oh five, typically it's not really practical to run through every finding for an entitlement, in the case of a zone change, there are only three, so I will run through each of them, the staff reports, of course, include much more detail from both the applicant and from staff in their analysis of the findings, and the more salient points will be found here in the next three slides. The first finding, finding A, requests amendment, is the amendment consistent with the policies adopted or in the adopted master plan? So that would be the twenty twenty master plan, the applicant quoted a number of policies, I've included two here on the slide, the first one being from Communities one point four, design complementary neighborhoods and rural districts. This, this policy also mentions that rural areas should minimize impacts on natural areas and nearby ranching and agricultural operations, these parcels are all located adjacent to the highway, so there is not a significant disturbance of rural areas. In in planning, what we were trying to avoid is building a one mile road into a rural area, having to extend public utilities, private utilities, and have longer emergency response times, so in other words, adjacent to the highway is not the same disturbance to rural areas, this policy is appropriately quoted. So in other words, adjacent to the highway is not the same disturbance to rural areas. This policy is appropriately quoted. Additionally, natural resource goal number three is quoted, mentioning adequate water supply. The Stagecoach General Improvement District will provide public water to these parcels. So in that sense, this is a little bit of a departure from our typical rural areas. This is an incremental expansion of existing utilities. And the location is along the highway, making access easier. Staff quoted a number of land use policies in, in the making of finding A and in finding the, the finding to be in the affirmative. And they're quoted here on the bottom, essentially following development patterns as established in the land use plan and recognizing that service levels vary by character districts. But I know I keep bringing up this point, but it is unusual and it is convenient to have public water available in a rural character district. Finding B asks about consistency with the adequate public facilities. I've already sort of touched on the reasons that these locations are not inconsistent with the public utilities, public facilities, policies, and that would be existing accesses are, are offered from NDOTs highway without any new ones proposed or needed and the availability of public water and the response times for both police and fire along Highway fifty. Finding C asks about compatibility with the actual or master planned adjacent uses. And I think this finding is, is oftentimes difficult sometimes for people who don't work in planning all the time to, to realize what is being requested. In this case, compatibility does not mean identical. If zoning was supposed to be identical, we wouldn't have, you know, borders for different zone changes. There are two qualities to these zoning designations, both the existing and the proposed. And that would be rural and residential. The first quality being the primary use is residential. So we move back to the maps here. We see the surrounding zonings, they are all rural and residential. Residential being the primary use means a single family home, not a multifamily home, not commercial, not industrial. And then the rural standard, also applicable to all these zoning districts is in Douglas, in Lyon County's code, excuse me, in Lyon County's code, two acres, five acres, ten, twenty are recognized as being rural zoning. And suburban zoning starts at one acre, half acre and down. So in this case, the compatibility for this finding is made because the primary use is still single family residential and the density is still rural. So staff was able to make findings, made a recommendation of approval to the Planning Commission at the Planning Commission's February fourteen, twenty twenty-three meeting with the appointment of Commissioner Hendricks and her stepping down from the Planning Commission. We had six planning commissioners. So there were no abstentions, but the vote came out to a recommendation of no approval or denial based on a three three vote. Stated reasons for voting aye in the meeting were consistency with the master plan and sufficient findings being made for the zone change. And the, the, the minutes I'm sure have been made available to you, but the stated reasons for voting nay were inconsistency with neighboring properties and development, concerns about flooding and some recognized public opposition. The, the, the Planning Commission meeting was a bit altered in format in that we heard both this item and the next item on your agenda at the same time. So some of the, the comments regarding the zone change were a little, a little confusing, not really always relevant to the actual findings for a zone change. We are, of course, hearing the zone change request here separately. I know the applicant has a presentation and is here. If you have any other questions, but that concludes my presentation and I am available for any questions you might have.
Questions? Commissioner Jacobson, anything? Commissioner Keller? Okay. Commissioner Hendricks? Commissioner Henderson?
Like to see the other presentation.
Okay. Public comment? African?
Good afternoon or good morning. For the record, Mike Brayley of Christie Corporation, you're representing Schaller Development. I have a, a presentation, it's, it's fairly repetitive from what Louis presented. I have a much more in-depth presentation for the next item, but I'll, I'll go through this quickly and try not to, to cover too much that wasn't already. There we go. So these first few slides, I think we're all covered under Louis's presentation in terms of, you know, where the site is, the, the things that, that's the wrong presentation. That's for the next slide. One should be, should was zone change presentation, one was kind of that presentation, but that was the one that was. Yeah. Okay. So. These were essentially the identical slides to what, what Louis presented. So as you recall, this was approved, the specific plan because it was over a hundred and sixty acres and under common ownership, that specific plan, master plan designation was approved here recently by this board, which is established kind of the framework of why we're here today. And really, I think this is really the only slide that, that's not repetitive of Lewis's. Is the zoning is directly compatible with all surrounding designations and is supported by policies of the master plan. For example, if we came in and were proposing an industrial designation, there's several master plan policies that would say, no, that's an incompatible use with what surrounds you. But under that rural residential designation, as, as Louis explained, this does, from a master plan perspective and a policy perspective, is compatible with all the surrounding zoning designations that surround the site. The other thing I think is important, it's, it's a rural residential district. These will, this zoning allows for two acre lots, which is a rural character, which is consistent with the other uses that are occurring in Stagecoach now. The granting of the zone change itself does not grant us a right to subdivide the property. As you know, we have another item on the agenda. This is, establishes the, the underlying land use for the property. There was questions raised at the advisory board of, of conditioning the, the project, whatnot. That's, that will come with the next agenda item, but this is just essentially the first step. So I don't really have a lot to add to what Louis said, but we're able to answer any questions.
No question?
Thank you.
Public comment?
Good morning.
Yeah, if you would, if you'd like to line up over there so we can kind of get an idea.
If you plan to give public comment, please line up over here on the, on the side of the room.
I do now. I got it. He's got it.
Good morning, Amanda Bernand. I live in Stagecoach and also provided an extensive written comment. At the March two thousand eighteen Stagecoach Advisory Board meeting, the applicant, Mr. Smith, made the statement that two hundred homes would have negative impacts on this community. He was referring to the exact same area, although they are now proposing fourteen less homes, but I couldn't agree more. Mr. Smith has never explained what he meant with those negative comments, so I'm guessing he's referring to the increased flooding risk and wildfire risk, small lot sizes not complimentary for the majority of the surrounding area. Well contamination from the ten to twenty percent of nitrates still leached into the soil with denitrification septic tanks, possibility of wells drying up, inadequate groundwater supplies, negative impacts to existing roads and especially negative impacts to existing residents. Inputs from residents was encouraged by the applicant meetings and the residents gladly provided many suggestions. It's very frustrating to see they were all ignored. And the encouraged input only seems to be a facade. The street lighting referred to in the staff report, it wasn't the applicant's agreement with the Stagecoach cab's request either. A resident asked a question about lighting in dark skies, the applicant responded, they weren't planning on putting in overhead lights anyways. The Stagecoach Advisory Board did forward a recommendation of denial and provided a multitude of reasons and comments for that. At the meeting, the applicant stated their lots would be functional extension of what exists today and they would essentially be lot matching. So the resident suggested the applicant put larger lots on the east, eastern side where the larger lots exist. So there'd be a transition, but this was ignored. Water, no groundwater study has been completed in the Stagecoach basin for actual groundwater levels. The applicant has stated they aren't concerned about water and wells going dry because a turf farm has been using more water than their development well. Well, I am concerned. So I asked a specialist at the Stagecoach Draining Meeting last week about this. He said because of the larger footprint of the development and the number of homes in the irrigated area, their development will indeed use more water than what the turf farm did. Also, the applicant was just approved for a reduction in water rights needed to provide hookup for the same number of homes. This is kind of insane. There isn't enough available groundwater for the amount of water rights that deeper municipal wells will out pump our private wells, causing them to dry up. And this exact situation has occurred only twenty-five miles from Stagecoach. Well contaminations is a big concern. There's a hundred and eighty-six septic tanks still pumping some nitrates into the soil. So if developers want to start developing this valley, let's get it right from the beginning and not just fill up our valley with septic tanks. You allow this, existing residents will eventually be drinking contaminated waters and they will be the ones having all the negative impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for signing in.
My name is Betty Retzer and I live adjacent, right directly adjacent neighboring the turf park. So this is going to have a major impact, I feel, on my property. And I'd like to reserve comments about the tentative map until we get to that particular item. But I would like to, I'm going to say dispute the statement that Mr. Carriola said about being compatible with the neighborhood. On paper, yes. Two acres, rural, yes, that's compatible with the rural stature of our neighborhood. However, in real life, it's not compatible at all. We have five acre, twenty acre, fifteen acre, forty acre parcels surrounding the turf farm property. Two acre parcels being approved for two acre lots is not compatible in real life. Thank you.
Did you sign in? Oh.
You don't want me to butcher that? Raymond Lee, Stagecoach resident. I heard about this a while back. I sent in a comment written to you guys. Obviously, I vigorously opposed the rezoning. I don't want any deviation from the master plan because RR five was what I wanted. I have two properties, so that makes me an RR ten. And I don't want to downsize any lower for this area. If you guys have been out to the area and noticed on Silver Lane, our lane is flooded. Okay. We're gonna suffer obviously more flooding and the increase of erosion and the traffic that's going to be on Black Hawk because according to their plan description, the majority of the traffic is going to be coming down Black Hawk, not down Laguardia. Number three, the environmental damage due to two thousand percent. If you notice the population density there, increased with the input of septic systems. And this is going to impact, obviously, our aquifer there. I asked that the commission, if they allowed us to go through the mandate escrow or set aside funds when our wells dry, go dry, that they pay for us to have to dig down further on, on our wells because, like I said, they charge a foot by the foot to dig wells and we can't take the burden at that expense. And also, I asked the commission to find them for a nuisance for refiling any mention of rezoning again. Because after all, this, this is ridiculous for us to have you guys refuse it or come at a stalemate at it and then we have to keep coming back and addressing this agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Jerry Coball. I live in Stagecoach there at Churchill Ranchos and anyway, I know our prayers were asking those people and their friends that was in that airplane crash, you know, I mean, I said a silent prayer for them. And another thing too, that I want to wish the best as to our new representative from our area, Cami. The Stagecoach people out there, really, really appreciate your work. So I appreciate you being here. Okay, I, I guess everybody, all of the commissioners I imagine has read all of the comments that the people have, have sent in. Okay, I have a few, I have a few comments that wasn't on any of this. And that's why I'm up here. Number one, they did, they did mention the flood and I was at the Stagecoach Advisory Council and they discussed the water problem, you know, at that time. And there was a representative from Lyon County there to answer questions and we, they answered. And I asked him about, you know, why don't you go down to the end of there in Churchill Ranches, go down to End of David and right there on the blacktop and, and look at what we have to put up with during, you know, a rainy season. Because I have been here before the county counselors five times now for the same thing. The, these, these people that that come up with, you know, wanting to rezone all this stuff for their benefit. They just keep moving around the chairs on the Titanic is all they do, you know. But we have a problem out there. I've got pictures that I showed this, these pictures are from two thousand and nineteen in March of the flooding area. Here's my neighbor's property and here's, well, here's my two neighbors on one side of the road and the other side of the road. And you can see the water up on the road here. And you can see the lake out there. In fact, about fifteen years ago, after, after one of the contractors wanted to redesign the whole area out there, you know, and rezone it. When we came back, somebody made a nice big sign saying Carpetbagger Lake, you know, and that, that sign stayed up for a few years. But anyway, I, I asked the guy, you know, it was at the Stagecoach meeting, if he would go out and take a look at it and he said, no, it's not his department.
And sorry, sir, your three minutes are up.
Are they? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, good enough. Okay, I've got pictures if anybody wants to see them. The flooding problem, you guys have read that. Ask the person to have somebody go out there and look at the lake. Here's the pictures if anybody wants to see them. And as far as I'm concerned, this whole area is, that they've got. And as far as I'm concerned, this whole area is, that they've got going right now is very poor planned. And I, I, I'd really suggest staying with the existing uh, master plan.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, we do have um, public comment on Zoom, Gary.
Good morning, Gary Hansel, Churchill Ranchos. At the Stagecoach Advisory Board meeting in November twenty-two, Schaller asked the residents for their input. Residents from both the Churchill Ranchos and the Blackhawk Silver Lane neighborhoods. Requested that the new development install a road from the development out to Highway fifty with a left and right turn. Seems simple enough. Instead, Schaller will use Caroline Way and Blackhawk Road and disrupt quiet residential neighborhoods on both sides with their traffic. Mr. Carriola just said, just a few moments ago, that new road access is not needed. With all due respect, that's his opinion and the planning opinion. The residents have a completely different opinion. Why does this developer refuse to listen to logic? Why is this developer constantly at odds with Stagecoach residents? Regarding potential flooding in the Ranchos and Blackhawk neighborhoods. Schaller is proposing to offload tens. Or hundreds of thousands of gallons of water from their development through a series of culverts to the playa south and east. Mr. Gillis, their engineer, said, and I quote. There could be some alternative methods for infiltrating the water into ground. We could end up with rap, some rapid infiltration basins. We don't know, end quote. Shouldn't they know? Shouldn't this commission know? Shouldn't the residents know before this development is approved and moved forward as to what the plan is to drain water off that property? Just like desert wells in the previous incarnation, it appears that the only responsibility Schaller has is just get the water off their property. Whatever happens after that is the adjacent people's problems and ultimately it will be Lyon County's problem. Because as I understand it, Schaller will set up an HOA to monitor and operate retention pond and the culverts. Will the new residents of their development be water engineers? Will the new residents be professional maintenance people who know how to operate and fix ponds? Or holding tanks or channels? Will the new residents be experts in closed basin water management? Of course not. Of course, the answer is no. So the end result is that an HOA with no practical experience in hydrology. Will be responsible for critical water management for three separate and distinct neighborhoods with their own issues. That sounds like a recipe for disaster. This board of commissioners, you gentlemen and and lady. You are only life, you are our only lifeline to representation for us Lyon County citizens. I urge you to vote no on this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the board? Okay, I don't see any other public comment or commissioner comment. So do I have a motion?
Mister Chair, um. These, these are always difficult cases for, for us to hear. You know, I certainly understand the, the concerns of the residents out there. However, I haven't seen anything that is, would, would um. Prevail in judicial review as a reason to deny. So based on that. I would like to move. I'll find the right motion. I would like to move that we approve the requested zoning, rezoning. From Schaller Development LLC, CO Project One to approve a zoning map amendment request. On nine parcels comprising four hundred and ninety-seven point five two acres south of US fifty. And Stagecoach from RR five, fifth rural residential district twenty acre meeting. And RR two, second rural residential district two acre minimum. Under Title ten to RR two rural residential two acre minimum. In accordance with the master plan designation of specific plan on APN zero one five four five one dash zero one. Zero one five dash three six five dash zero one, zero two, zero three and zero four. Zero one five dash three seven one, zero five, zero six, zero seven and zero eight. PLZ twenty twenty-two dash two oh six, based on the findings contained in the staff report.
Have a motion by Commissioner Henderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have five zero to approve the zoning. And we'll move on to sixteen D. For possible action to approve the request from Schaller Development LLC care of project one of a merger and re-subdivision tentative subdivision map of nine parcels comprising approximately four hundred and ninety-seven point five two acres south of US Highway fifty and Stagecoach. Into a hundred and eighty-six single-family residential lots with a minimum lot size of two acres and a maximum size of seventeen point seven acres. Should be APN zero one five dash three six five dash zero one, zero one five dash three six five dash zero two, zero one five dash. Three six five dash zero three, zero one five dash three six five dash zero four, zero one five dash three seven one dash zero five. Zero one five dash three seven one dash zero six, zero one five dash three seven one dash zero seven, zero one five dash three seven one dash zero eight. Zero one five dash four five one dash zero one. PLZ two zero two two dash two zero seven staff report.
Uh, Louis Carriola, Senior Planner presenting. We've already just heard the last item, so I believe everyone knows the location of these nine parcels in Stagecoach, south of Highway fifty. We also, in the last presentation, went over the existing conditions of these, again, the same nine parcels discussed in PLZ two oh two 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 oh six. The rural character district uh, is displayed on the left. As previously stated, the entire Stagecoach community uh, holds that character district. And the master plan designation for all nine parcels is again, specific plan. Uh, as a result of the uh, vote in the last item. Uh, all nine parcels zoning is currently rural residential two acre minimum RR two. Uh, Title fifteen, our development code includes uh, the stated purpose uh, for this zoning district. I've underlined the, the most important part, single-family detached units in suburban fringe and rural settings with a minimum lot size of two net acres. Uh, unless otherwise specified, no more than one primary residence per parcel is permitted. I think the important part in that purpose phrase is that uh, it's intended for the suburban fringe. As kind of touched upon during the presentation for the zone change. Uh, rural residential, the smallest size for a rural uh, zoning district in Lyon County is two acres. Uh, and the suburban fringe would be uh, the fact that this is adjacent to a state highway. I know that there were some comments in the previous item about uh, new accesses, uh, just to be clear. Uh, the state of Nevada's Department of Transportation uh, is in control of accesses onto their state highways, not Lyon County. At this point, I, I do have my slide with, with the proposed subdivision. Uh, but I think uh, for this item, unlike the last one, it's probably appropriate for uh, the applicant to describe their project. So I'm just going to turn it over to them, unless you have any questions for me at this time.
Any questions, not from Mr. Carriola. Okay, not at this time. I do have some. Got a bunch.
Good morning, once again, excuse me, morning, once again, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation, representing Schaller Development. Get our presentation. Um, I, I think we all know why we're here. This is a request for a tentative subdivision map and a merger and re-subdivision map. To allow for the creation of a hundred and eighty-six single-family lots lots. Um, as, as Louis said, I think we're, we're all familiar with, with where the project is and the zoning, so I'll kind of jump into it. Um, what I think is important to, to understand is how we got to where we are today. Um, what you see there is the previous plan that was proposed, uh, known as Desert Wells, which called for fourteen hundred units. Um, on much, much smaller lots, including some multifamily units. Uh, where we've come today, um, is a hundred and eighty-six units on two acre minimum lots. Um, I've heard a lot of discussion that, that Schaller Development has not listened to the concerns of the neighbors. And I think if you look at a comparison of those plans, uh, Schaller has reduced the density by eighty-seven percent. In the total number of units of what was proposed originally to where we are today. Additionally, we've eliminated the multifamily component. Um, the, the project is designed to rural standards versus the suburban standards that were previously proposed. Um, the lot sizes that we're proposing two acres, if I went back and went through the minutes of the previous, I wasn't involved in Desert Wells, but I went back and looked at those minutes. There was numerous comments from residents, they wanted to see one or two acre lots, that that would be satisfactory. We were proposing, I had a minimum two acre lots, um, and, and up from there. In fact, Schaller withdrew the Desert Wells. Request before it came to a vote in order to go back to the drawing board and come up with a new project. It was again redesigned to about two hundred and five units and then reduced down to a hundred and eighty-six. Um, the zoning that, the RR two zoning would permit up to two hundred and forty-five units. But we're only requesting seventy-five percent of what would be permitted under that, uh, the zoning you just approved. So we're at a hundred and eighty-six versus the two hundred and forty-five. Um, originally, when we had met with the advisory board, we were proposing gravel roads. We agreed that we will pave all the roads to, to Lyon County standards, uh, rural standards. Uh, street lighting came up as an issue and we did agree that we would not have any street lighting. Um, it wasn't something that, that we said that we're not doing it because you want, it was, it was an option that we're looking maybe doing intersections, but we agreed for the dark skies concerns to remove. Uh, the street lighting from the project. In terms of overall considerations, uh, we feel that this project is a direct reflection of the community desires expressed during the Desert Wells. Review and going back to those minutes, I saw this at the advisory board, there were dozens and dozens of people at those meetings. Um, we definitely had people at the meetings this time, but it was a fraction of the concerns that were raised during that previous review. Um, as I mentioned before, it's an eighty-seven percent reduction from what was previously proposed. Um, we will have a homeowners association that will be dedicated uh, for common area maintenance, including uh, storm drainage facilities, and we'll get to that here in just a minute. Um, the two acre minimum lot size is rural per Lyon County definitions, um, as we discussed under the zoning map amendment. Uh, the project will be developed in four phases and will directly complement development within Churchill Ranchero Estates. With that, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Jason Gillis with tech engineering to go over some of the engineering issues that have been raised during the process.
Morning, as Mike said, I'm Jason Gillis with tech engineering. Um, the final designs for this tentative map will adhere to all state county code. Um, the GID is involved as well. Um, the project does mitigate the offsite stormwater flows that flow through the property and onward. We'll come back to that in a minute. Um, potable water service is provided by the GID. Uh, the GID operates their system on a series of wells and tanks. They are responsible um, to the state for keeping themselves in compliance for water quality, water production, usage. Recently, they did get a reduction in their dedication rate. That was not as a result of this project, it was outside of this project. That reduction is granted by the state engineer. And it's based on the GID going to the state engineer with records of how much water. Their meter users are using. So it's a direct correlation of what the customers use out there in the GID. And again, that dedication rate reduction has nothing to do with this project. This project will adhere to, to, to those dedication rates, but it wasn't driven or caused by this. It was something the GID started. Um, at least back in twenty twenty, when they did their, um. Oh, I forget the name of the report. They worked with the Nevada Rural Water Association to come up with those meter readings, their water conservation plan. Um, which was a published document where they went and, and like I say, worked with Nevada Rural Water. Um. Sorry, I digressed. Um, all the applicable engineering studies for the tentative map have gone to the county. When we do final design, there will be. The same or more amount of final design reports that get reviewed by the county, the building department, the GID, the state. So this is not the only review of the engineering design for the project. This is just the engineering review that looks at, is it feasible to handle our stormwater this way? To get potable water from the GID. Um, along those lines, the project um, will be septic systems. Those septic systems uh, will have denitrification systems on them. Those denitrification systems. Are maintained by the GID. Twice a year, they go out and make sure they're still working. Um, to get to the point where you even have that um, septic system. Um, the design engineer goes out and does a couple perk tests, designs the system. It goes to the GID's engineer for review, goes to the building department Lyon County for review, goes to the state for review. So those systems, every one of them has a lot of eyes on it before it's ever approved. The amount of nitrates that are released into the soil depends, of course, on what the household is putting out. But the reduction has been proven to be so great among a lot of communities in Nevada that we keep going back to it and it's proven effective. So if, Andrew, could I get a, a different slider?
Yeah, um.
That's a good one. So. Talking about the, the project's design, stormwater, floodwaters. I think you can see there's a network of roads that basically run from the northwest to the southeast. And those roads follow the gradient of the land out there, the old ranch. Um, they're there, not only for, to facilitate movement, but. It, it really helps us handle the drain water on this project. So we've got a number of culverts that come underneath Highway fifty. And that spills water onto the project. We capture those and, and we commute them down to that brown area on the project. At the same time, the north end of Churchill Estates. Uh, that teal color on the left, we've got a cutoff ditch over there that captures all the water before it gets to that subdivision. Um, collects up the roadside ditch from Caroline. And then at the corner of that property, there's a detention basin. That detention basin allows me to take that stormwater, turn it ninety degrees down towards the playa while slowing it down. And detain it. It's not gonna sit there as a full pond for any amount of time. Twenty-four hours is usually. The maximum timeframe that you want to keep water at a detention pond. Additionally, the GID has a well right there. And as you may know, when you go out and exercise a well, pump it, there's a lot of water that ends up on the ground. That detention pond contains that, doesn't throw it into the right side. As you move farther to the east, that yellow area. Same thing happens, we're able to capture those flows coming off Highway fifty as well as the new flows that we create with paved roads and roofs. And it's portion, a portion of that purple area, same thing, you can see there's a road that follows that same matrix. We turn that water and take it back towards the southwest. In regards to where all that water goes, you see those large lots in the brown area. There will be detention basins on those lots. Those detention basins will be sized. And the size I had with gravel roads is gonna have to go up a little bit more with paved roads. Um, but those are sized to contain the same amount of water that gets generated by that asphalt and those rooftops. We're mandated by code to retain or detain, but keep all that new water, new water. You know, water that doesn't sink into the ground, hits the pavement, hits the roofs and ends up in the ditches instead of hitting those farm fields and infiltrating. But we're required to keep that, that amount of water on our property. So we've got about fifty acres there. That we can utilize for retention. And when I say retention, not different than the detention. You know, those are gonna be ponds, that water's gonna sit there until it infiltrates or evaporates. So you, you heard of one of the neighbors' comments, I was talking about rapid infiltration at one of the public meetings. We may take those ponds and dig them deep enough that we can put uh, sand and rock in them to get it to infiltrate faster. We won't know until we dig the soils up, we do those perk tests and get that water there, what kind of treatment we'll use. But it will be a retention pond system of some sort. But it will be a retention pond system of some sort. We're going to hear a lot about flooding from neighbors that are located to the east. Uh, Silver Lane, that area is uphill and easterly of this project. We don't accept their stormwater, we don't provide stormwater to that area. It's purely driven by a couple of culverts that come underneath the highway, drain to Blackhawk and then go down Silver Lane. I, I've struggled to make the nexus how this project that doesn't con, doesn't contribute any stormwater to that part of the world. Should be held responsible for their flooding. It, it, and it's been a, it's been a conversation at every G I D meeting. Or uh, stagecoach board meeting, planning commission. Now, when we pay in Blackhawk, there will be the ability to work with the county. To channelize some of that water, do some culverts, do some improvements over there. But again, that water isn't affected by this property. It is. It is stormwater that generates above highway fifty, passes through their property before it goes to the playa that's east of them. So. Now, there will be water that continues on to our property. There to the south, the, the low point of the valley is a little bit south of us. But again, that's the water that we're required to commute through the property. At the same flow rates, same points of discharge as they were historically. So. I hope I've, I've answered the flooding questions, but I'm certainly available to, to answer more if we have any. This point.
Uh, Commissioner Hendricks, you said you had some questions?
Yeah, I, I do, I'm, the drainage is a concern uh, to me and I would kind of like. I guess you probably don't have the information now, but I would like to know. What the maintenance schedule is going to be for all those ditches and ponds because. Out there with the wind and the blowing sand, nature really tries to take things back.
Certainly, certainly. So um, for, for the initial phases of the subdivision, um, it'll be held. You know, during construction, there'll be a slip permit and that slip permit. You know, you see the silk fences and the gravel bags and all that stuff um, on construction sites. The requirements for keeping your slip in order are to go out after every storm and verify that, that the improvements are still in place. That the B M Ps are in place. So during construction. I, I, I really do anticipate it's, it's every storm event that's noteworthy. I mean, the fifteen minute shower, maybe not, but fifteen minute thunderstorm in summer that dumps an inch, yeah. After that, like any HOA, it'll be regularly scheduled stuff. So they'll have a, a maintenance schedule that involves a pre-winter and a post-winter. You know, regular maintenance and then they'll be on call for when there are problems. But if this. What happens with these systems is it's lack of maintenance that causes problems. So if there is properly maintained and it's taken care of in the fall. And then whatever happened in the winter is buttoned up in the spring, we don't see too many problems with storm drain systems when they're maintained.
So between the initial construction and when enough homes have been built to establish an HOA, who will maintain that?
Uh, an HOA is established on day one. The HOA members are made up of the ownership of lots. So from day one, there's an HOA, it's just controlled by the developer until enough lots are sold that you start to get members on the board.
Okay, thank you. Then the other concern I had is. The subdivision to the west established the two acre lot and set a precedent. Now, we're kind of continuing that and I know I can't require it, the zoning doesn't require it, but I would. Like to request that you put four acre lots on the eastern boundary to stop that precedence from keep continuing east.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County manager for the record, um, we don't have any standards and code that would require the lot matching, but if the developer is willing to, um.
Yes, that's what I'm asking if he's willing, if they're willing to do that.
Yeah, so um, we can absolutely. Ask them if they're willing to or.
You might, before you guys go on that, uh, might, might want to wait till we're done with the questions because I probably have a same type of question.
No, I still have one more item and it's something that hasn't come up at any of the community meetings. And I realize you've tried to make the right choices for the community by choosing just the simple county road. And dark skies, no street lighting, but the problem that I see with that is we're going to have. A huge number of lots, kids trying to get to the bus stop. At the same time, parents are trying to get to work and get home from work and for about half of the school year, that happens in the dark. For our kids. And my concern is pedestrian access, they can only walk in the street. And I know it's not required by county standard, but I'd also like you to consider putting in pedestrian walkways. Within the right of way to be maintained by the HOA, or if you wanted. Put easements through and just have pedestrian pass through the project or whatever, but that to me, it seems like a really serious safety concern. And so I wanted to ask if you would consider doing that as well.
We don't have the presentation?
Yeah.
Uh, I believe so. And your questions?
Mister Chair, I, I did have uh, sort of a closing portion of my presentation. Uh, kind of outlining some of the conditions and then how the stack report uh, attempted to address some of the stated concerns of the public.
Well, I was, I was thinking if, if we have questions for engineers, uh, we could have them working on that while you close the presentation if we want to move on to that. Yeah, okay, that's fine.
All right.
Okay, that's a possibility, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Chair, uh, Louis Carriola Senior Planner again. Uh, so for one thing, I did want to comment on the tech engineering. Discussion by Mister Gillis, uh, you know, the, the county in twenty eighteen updated our drainage guidelines. So these preliminary uh, studies that were submitted as part of this tentative map. Uh, were designed in accordance with those drainage studies. Uh, but his statements regarding future review are accurate and correct. The tentative map recommended conditions of approval do denote the fact that there are still. Engineering reviews by the county engineer uh, prior to recording of the final map in addition to a number of other qualities. It did sort of summarize some of the issues of concern that reveal themselves in the, in the public record. Uh, water has already been discussed being provided by a, a public utility district, uh, sewer. And uh, concerns about potential groundwater contamination uh, through N D, N D E P originally approved, but then. Uh, permitted through the county's building department. Uh, and then checked on by the G I D, uh, each unit will have denitification septic system. Uh, the roadways are uh, agreed upon to be paved to rural standards. Uh, stormwater designs again, at this stage, preliminarily designed. According to our drainage guidelines, but as previously stated by tech engineering, uh, until more uh, information and data is available, that would be. Perk tests and, and then ultimately a final design reviewed by the county engineer. You know, we're just not at that stage, tentative map stage does not require that level of detail yet. But there will, there will be no recordation of the final map until all of those studies have been reviewed by the county engineer. Some of the recommended conditions of approval sort of summarized here, uh, in, in staff's attempt. Uh, to, to drive home the point uh, that these items are yet to be finally determined. Uh, condition twenty-five discusses denitification septic systems, uh, condition six, paved roadways. Condition twenty, that the drainage facilities comply with our drainage guidelines. Uh, condition three. Uh, mentions uh, C C and Rs having to be uh, created along with the homeowners association. I did hear at the, the stagecoach community advisory board meeting I attended last month, and then again at the planning commission and again today. Uh, comments about, you know, the HOA not being constituted of hydrologists. Right, I just want to point out, I think that's a, an incorrect characterization of HOA's functions. Uh, in the role of maintenance, if, if an HOA is responsible for mowing the lawns in a development. The, the members don't necessarily put on their boots and get out their lawnmower, they use the funds in the HOA. Um, pool to hire a landscaper to do so. So it's not expected that, that Bob Jones from down the street is going to go get his shovel and clean out the, the drainage basin, I did want to point that out. And then finally, I did want to just sort of summarize uh, what occurred at the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting. As previously mentioned in the last item, since the zoning amendments failed to provide a recommendation. At three, three, the planning commission was in the sort of unique position of recognizing it wasn't appropriate to hear a tentative map. When the zoning wasn't being recommended for approval. Uh, so they elected to table uh, the, the vote on this, uh, resulting in essentially no recommendation to this body. And then that, that includes my portion and I know the applicants representatives are here, so I. I don't know if there's other questions for me that they need to hear before maybe they take a moment to, to come back to you with answers.
Any questions for anybody? That needs to be up here talking. Yes, yeah, good, all right. First, Commissioner Hendricks, have you, okay, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank, thank you, Mister Chair. So. Now, now that the roads are going to be paved, are they still going to be maintained by the H L A?
But we have a standard condition, uh, and I, I can get back to you with the actual numbers. Typically for subdivisions, the county will not accept for maintenance. Uh, the roadways until ninety percent of the units uh, had been constructed. So that puts us on the order of a hundred and sixty.
Yeah, but my, my question was, because I think the plan was whenever they're going to be just gravel roads, they were not going to be ever accepted by the county. So. I'm, I'm just curious if, if, if the HOA is going to maintain ownership of the roads or if the county is going to take them over and be responsible for it at some point in time.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County manager. So at the time that the roads were proposed to be gravel, Lyon County won't accept the gravel road and so they were going to have to be maintained by. Um, by the HOA. Um, that's not a requirement when the roads are built to, to county standards and so I believe the proposal is to um. Dedicate the, the roadway to Lyon County, uh, once they, I think that, that, yeah.
Okay, because that, that, that confused me because it was, it's um. Uh, condition nineteen F or something where, where it said that, so. That, that was one thing that I had and then I guess I have another question, but that would be for the proponents of this. Yes, se- several, several times in, in your, the um. Your proposals, you and your discussion, you mentioned you were gonna um. Plan to encourage the use of zero escaping. Would, would be any consideration to actually require that as part of the C C Rs?
Yeah, I, that's it actually, it's easy to do, we could, we could incorporate that into the C C R, zero escape standard.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got a couple things, the engineer, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions, or just probably just one. Just to clarify, see if I got it right in my mind about how these projects work and maybe it's. Open to the public, so at least they understand what's going on. Water in Nevada is owned by the state of Nevada. And any water traveling through your property does not belong to you. You cannot touch it, do anything with it, right? You can, as long as it continues on to its uh. Final source. But any water that is landing on your property from the sky. You have to, uh, because of FEMA, which is federally regulated, you have to contain. That's the difference between the infiltration bonds and the.
Yes, we, we, we can't intensify our use of the property, therefore increasing the runoff onto our neighbor. So that, that increase in the runoff, we have to keep it on our own property. So that the neighbor receives the water that they received historically.
Okay, so that, that, that's the reason for the two different types of bonds. In uh, recording this is probably for the, the people that are. Developing it and. In recording the C C and Rs for the final HOA. Would you guys include an operation and maintenance plan for the ditches and, and the detention basin? For, uh, I'll give you some examples of what, what I'm looking at. And I, just for consideration. And a lot of these, if you go around in the retention ponds, we are required because federal says that we have to do this. But at the same time, they become nothing more than a, a collection pond for garbage, a collection for weeds, no one takes. You know, they, they can take care of it, but normal way you develop that is to put rock on the sides and everything to where you can't even get in there. To actually maintain it. Would you guys consider putting in a plan, do it right, right from the start, the developing to make it easy to clean, make it uh, so you can drive through it? Some kind of thing, be the first in our county to show it's done right, that would be helpful to the community and.
Again, again, Jason Gillis, tech engineer for the record, the, the intent was to spell all that out in the C C and Rs, the HOA documents. Um, also since these are roadside ditches. Um, ease of maintenance is your road department will tell you is everything. So, um, you know, these. They're asphalt roads, four foot base shoulders, down to a ditch, that ditch ends up rock for the most part. Um, and then the detention basins, same thing, retention basins typically don't have all that rock because we want the water to. Go down, but they'll be easy to get into, they won't be deep.
Well, at the same time, they become weed and everything else, so then, so we got to be able to maintain them. So in some way, so I just know that everyone that I drive by looks terrible. So I'd like to see one that actually is done right. Also, uh, on their road plan. On the uh, tentative map. Can we see that? Just the one that has the roads on it. This is tentative map, so it's not. You can make adjustments. Ten and eleven lots, ten and eleven where, where phase one comes down with an arrow right at it. And sixty, fifty-two and fifty-three. Is there a way that you could develop those lots to where you straighten out and don't have a angled road? We end up with the angled roads all over the place and it's. You follow me?
Yeah.
You know, straighten it out before you hit the road, straighten it out coming off the road, you could put the curve in the.
Yeah, that's the existing roadway that's there, so we could work with.
Not, not out at Endot, down inside your development, that's a road right there, isn't it?
Right at the northeast corner of Churchill Estates. Well, I, I'm lost.
That's the culvert, that's not the road?
Yeah, the, the road goes this way.
Oh.
And see, see this coming off of. Fifty. Next to water.
So that's, that's an existing roadway, right?
Okay. There's, is that a roadway, is that the drainage between, between lots ten and eleven and lots fifty-two and fifty-three, is that, is that drainage?
That's a road coming off the highway, isn't it?
That road and drainage.
Yeah, both com- combined, but, but once you get into ten and eleven, you can straighten that out to the main road and then come back, do you see what I'm saying? Like what Endot does, it just puts a little swell on one side, straighten it out, then pick it up on the other side. In other words, the two roads might not match. Or they could match, but you guys can bring it in and bring it back out. Get a straightaway, uh, get the angles off there. Well, kind of, you did it up there on twenty-six and twenty-seven. That's what I'm saying. Just for your consideration, I, I know we can't require it. I think that's all I got it right at the moment, I, uh, I wait for a public comment and then. Okay, Commissioner Jacobson. You're good?
I'm good, thank you, Chair.
And all my questions are answered, so uh. If that's the case, then we'll uh, go on to.
if that's the case, then we'll go on to
Go to give them
minutes for the answers, if you wanted to work on that. Actually, do we want to go to lunch, since it's getting almost noon?
Well, I wouldn't go to lunch, but maybe just a bathroom break for five minutes?
No, no lunch break in the middle of an item, but we want to take that.
But I mean, we're we're not going to do it in the middle of this, but getting close to noon, take about a five-minute break for bathrooms, water, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, five minutes.
Yeah, I didn't need to go this minute, but we're getting, we're getting close to the noon time.
Yeah, so yeah, let's get
Yeah, we're going to get through this, yeah. So take a five. Back to business on sixteen D, so we will have, I guess, some answers to some questions, if you want to present that. Appreciate it.
Once again, for the record, Mike Riddler, Christie Corporation. I think there were, there were two issues, one being the pedestrian pass and the second being the four-acre bots. On the pedestrian path, the the road actually has a four-foot shoulder on each side, so what I think would be more effective than doing like a DG path that could potentially clog up culverts and that sort of thing is we will be agreed to paint the fog line on the road so it clearly defines the travel lanes to the car so that it it's more clear where pedestrians are safe to walk. We'd be willing to to do that. On the four-acre lots, I think it it set somewhat of a precedent in terms of the zoning not requiring, however, I think Sheller has shown that he's willing to make changes to get to where we're at. So on those eastern, I believe it's eight lots that are affected, kind of on the east and the southeast, we would convert those from two acres to four acres.
Thank you.
So, okay, go ahead, Commissioner Henderson.
Do we want to put up the map to so we're clear on where
I have a question, so.
Let me show up on there. So. You're talking. Yeah.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So are you gonna, so if you if you take eight, eight lots and make four lots out of them, then you're down to a hundred and eighty-two units. You do have room down in phase four of some of those bigger lots where you could actually put those four lots back and have no net loss.
Potentially, I'd refer that to Sister Killis, obviously, we have some some drainage facilities down there. But potentially, I I that might be a little premature for me to make that judgment.
Jason Gillis, for the record. Yeah, you know, as we talk about going from a tentative map to a final map, there's oftentimes tweaks and changes and block sizes and road alignments. So, yeah, with the stipulation of, you know, going to four lots on that eastern boundary, I'm sure we would love like to have the ability to keep it at a hundred and eighty-six units. And if I can design roads that make sense, maybe we get one or two of those back elsewhere. I don't know that they're in phase four. But there are a number of two-point-five, two-point-six acre lots in this, and maybe, maybe we get there, but I, what I'm saying is I would like to keep it a hundred and eighty-six unit tentative map and stipulate the four-acre lots on that eastern map. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Public comments? If you have a public comment in chambers, please go ahead and line up and we'll take Zoom next after the chambers comments.
Hello again, Amanda Bernand. First, I'd like to thank Sheller for doing the four-acre lots, and second, I do want to state that Silver Lane is elevationally lower than the subdivision. Just look at Google Earth. They had said it's higher. It isn't. So I attended the Stagecoach Area Drainage Master Plan Meeting last week in Stagecoach, and Stagecoach isn't in closed basin. What flows into this valley never flows out. It either evaporates or seeps into the ground. They also said at that meeting that Stagecoach has very unique kinds of flood risks, and sedimentation is a big issue in this valley. The master plan does state that the Playa and Stagecoach is subject to frequent flooding and occupies the land south of the highway and is unsuitable for development due to its function as a floodplain. The existing homes on the south side of the highway probably never should have been built there, but they were approved by the county and they already exist, but I am concerned that this flooding issue is now going to be compounded by this development because they are on that same floodplain, and changing water flows will affect the existing residents. They do state that they're going to discharge the water from that is starts on the development to the Playas to the south and east. There is a big playa that runs from west side of Churchill Ranchos all the way to Break a Heart Road, and at Break a Heart Road, that and another road act as a dam, the dam it up. I have witnessed this entire playa holding water, and it actually does flow very slowly towards the east in the Silver and Blackhawk areas. And so our concern is, is this additional water is added, and that fly playa becomes saturated, that it will come back into Silver and Blackhawk. That, you know, I want to ensure that the developer pays attention to what happens to the water after it leaves his property. That's what we're concerned about. So water also does currently flow south down Blackhawk and east down Silver. Blackhawk will be paved, they've said, as long with wrong way, and drainage ditches installed, but we're concerned of where these drainage ditches are going to move the water to. Moving it down Silver and using Silver, a public road as a drainage ditch, isn't, it isn't right, and you know, it's a big safety issue for the Silver Lane residents. This is a very complex system in Stagecoach, that's what the specialists said. And the simple answer of just putting in a bunch of drainage ditches to get it off their property, it isn't going to work. There is a domino effect in here, and that's why we're so concerned. We don't want to be underwater. Another question is, why is a detention pond wrapped around a Churchill Ranchos residence instead of internal to the development? And they said it won't be in the detention pond more than twenty-four hours, but I don't know how they can say that. We've had standing water for over two months, and it's still there. I'm concerned that these residents in Churchill Ranchos will have septic and flooding issues from the seepage from this detention ponds. Detention ponds also reduce property values, or an eyesore and mosquitoes are an issue from. So why is this detention pond immediately adjacent to their property? Is that my alarm?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if I need to read it twice.
You're next.
Thank you, Betty Retzer, again. My first statement is, do no harm. I'm not seeing anything associated with this subdivision that is going to stand by those words, do no harm. They're talking about roads and drainage. The roads in the development are going to be paved. Where's that water going, going to go? The drainage culverts that they're going to put in, where are they going to direct that water? They're going to direct it to the east. There's a lot of empty lots over there. I happen to own one. I don't want that water draining onto my property. I don't want it draining onto the property that I live on. As Amanda said, we've had water standing for at least two weeks. Twenty-four hours is not going to make water disappear. Traffic, they're talking about, the documents say that the traffic will be routed internally without the need to go on the highway. What does that mean? That means they're going to be circling around in the development? Where do they go from there? Acreage. I appreciate the fact that they're looking at doing four-acre lots to the side. Could you put that map back up? No? Huh, okay. You saw on the side where they're going to put the four-acre lots. I would like to see the larger lots that they've got scheduled for the seventeen acres, at least five acres around the perimeter of the property with perhaps the two-acre lots being heavily inside and adjacent to Churchill Estates where it's already two-acre lots. I think it's interesting, in the documents, they say that there's not going to be any impact by this development on schools. Yet the school, as came before you today, is currently asking for modular buildings to have more space for classrooms and offices. That sounds like they're not prepared for an impact of a hundred and eighty-six more houses. The HOA, who's going to have money in the HOA at the very beginning to start maintaining the things that are going to be going on during construction? I think the developer is going to be doing that. And speaking of developers, we were told at one of the meetings that there's not going to be one developer for the property. It's going to be lots sold, and each person then will be responsible for getting their own developer to build on that property. I'm not sure how that fits in with HOA's landscape maintenance and so on and so forth. Fencing, talk about fencing. The area that we live in on Blackhawk Road, Silver Lane, all of that area there is all wild horse property. They come and go.
That would be your three minutes. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Fence the property.
Give all stagecoach. Want to talk about drainage? They had a meeting in Stagecoach. FEMA is going to give us Stagecoach some money, do a study on the floodplain and sediment. I would wish that before you vote on this, that we see what the study brings on up for the flooding and sediment on the playa.
Thank you.
We have a public comment on Zoom, Linda Mulkey.
Yeah, this is Jim Mulkey, resident of Stagecoach, Churchill Ranchos Estates, had a couple of questions. Okay, the access to lots one and two on that map, are they going to be north access, or are they going to connect into Carolyn above Churchill Ranchos on the south side? Also, lots ten and eleven, you're talking about Lee Guard Road coming in there on the e- what, east side? Is that going to be widened? And also with Carolyn Way, the roads coming into Carolyn Way, is that going to be widened for the traffic? Because right now, our roads ain't that wide. And none of you county commissioners probably have never drove down here and seen it. If there is a garbage truck coming down the road, you're going to wait for that garbage truck either to pull over so you can pass it? So how are the roads existing in Churchill Ranchos going to, going to support the traffic coming out of two hundred homes from this new development? And the other thing I have is, who's going to be responsible for the flooding when Churchill Ranchos gets flooded again? We've seen it before. I've been living here for twenty-five years. And like they say, we've had water out in our lake up to June. So twenty-four hours, somebody better get, get their mathematics straight. And it blows from the north east to the southwest. And it all puddles up down here. So that is my questions, and I would like them and an answer.
Thank you. We have Gary.
Good afternoon again, Gary Henzel, Stagecoach Ranchos. First, real quickly, the lights were not part of the original plan. So when the the representative from Christie Corp. says they took it out after public comment, that's, that's disingenuous. That's a minor point, though. I want to go back to the HOA. The gentleman from the developer said, you know, Bob Jones from the HOA won't put his boots on and, you know, be mucking out a a retention pond or fixing a culvert or whatever the case may be. True enough. So if the HOA is established on day one, fine, but the question still looms, and it looms very large for three neighborhoods, who and exactly how is taking care of the water management? If something if and when something goes wrong with the water drainage inside the development or on either side of this new development, who's going to take care of it? There'll be very few people in the HOA. It it will hardly be established. I presumably there won't be any money because there's nobody to pay money into it. And so either the HOA or the Blackhawk Silver residents or the Ranchos residents, what, I mean, who, who are we going to call? Sheller has already said they're going to sell off lots to individual contractors. So again, the HOA, they're going to be tracking down multiple sources to try and fix or amend a problem if there is a problem or when a problem develops with the water. So again, I go back to my earlier point, on the pre, my previous statement is leaving, I understand they won't be hydrologists and water engineers in the HOA. Fine, we all know that, but that begs the question, who will be the expert or experts taking care of the water management for these three neighborhoods? It it's an unanswered question. It's just out there. Sheller and his representatives have not answered it. They just keep saying the HOA will do it. Well, okay, so Mr., Mr. Gillis, yeah, the the engineer in the, at the planning commission, he had said, quote, in this case, she's talking about water, in this case, I see us actually taking a lot of that burden off because some of the water on the east end I'm going to take to the south end with the, south end with this project. An earlier resident had made the comment of chairs on a Titanic. That's exactly it. That's what, that's what that is. I'm going to take water from the east and put it down in the south, or I'm going to take water from here and put it over there. So that resident was exactly on, spot on with his comments.
And your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Vita Keller, you're on.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment. I've been listening to all the public comment today, and I heard how they are not listening to the community. And as a former commissioner of this board, I attended all the meetings back when it was the bigger subdivision with the multifamily. And most of the citizens in Stagecoach at that time tried to steer them to one and two acre lots, and so I just want that to be on the record, that the community asked for one and twos. They're coming back with twos, so I think they have addressed the community's request. And when it comes to HOAs, they do a blanket HOA, and I'm assuming that's the intent here from what I've read and what I've heard. And it's not unusual to have a subdivision with one HOA that the individual lots are developed by different contractors. I do believe you have a commissioner sitting on the board now that lives in a subdivision like that called Santa Maria Ranch. Individual contractors were, build those lots and have since the beginning. But it's one HOA that governs the whole project, so just wanted that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other Zoom, and nobody else is lined up. You have any further comments from anybody in the board? If not, then I will be looking for a motion.
Fine. I will take care. I'll, I'll be the fall guy. All right. So, Mr. Chair. I move that we approve the request of Sheller Development LLC CEO Project One for a merger and re-subdivision tentative subdivision map on nine parcels, total approximately four hundred and ninety-one point two acres in Stagecoach, proposing one hundred and eighty-six residential lots ranging between two and seventeen point seven seven acres in size. APN zero one five four five one dash zero one, zero one five dash three six five dash zero one, zero two, zero three, and zero four, zero one five three seven one, dash zero five, zero six, zero seven, and zero eight, PLZ twenty twenty-two dash two zero seven, based on the findings contained in the staff report one through eleven, and subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report one through twenty-nine with the inclusion of with the inclusion of requiring zero escaping in the CCRs. And a stipulation that the, the eight lots on the east side will be converted to four acre lot sizes. I think I covered it.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson. I believe you said four hundred ninety one point five two acres. It's four ninety seven.
Well, that, that's what I read right here. So four, four hundred and ninety plus acres. How's that?
Four ninety seven. Yeah, so we had a
Four ninety one point two.
Okay, all right, so.
I'll second that.
Second, okay, so we have a, a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Keller. Uh, all those in favor.
The applicant mentioned that you missed an APN in the, uh, the last one. In zero one five four five, uh, uh, one oh one.
That was the first one I read.
Right? So you're good. Sounded good. Motion's here. We've had that completed. Motion and second. All those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Your carries five zero. All right. We are going to, uh, break for lunch. However, I have, uh, discussed with the, uh, the county manager and for those who are here for the solid waste proposal, we are going to do that immediately when we get back. We'll move item nineteen A up so that we will take care of that, uh, get, kind of get you out of here. A little earlier, we were hoping to get that done before lunch, but, uh, we're going to break until one fifteen. And let's all be back here at, at one fifteen. And we are going to move item nineteen A to here right now to this point in the meeting. Uh, I believe Mr. Haskin has some things to show us and talk about us. We're going to have for possible action today, we award, award the Lyon County Solid Waste Display Franchise based on the responses received for request for proposal number twenty two dash ten or slash ten, direct staff to enter into contract negotiations with the winning proposal. Proceed.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record. Um, so I figured we'd go through each of these page by page. Um, I hope everyone's, is ready for, for dinner break. No, just kidding. All right. So we're here today to discuss the solid waste franchise. I was asked to include some information just on, um, purchasing and, um, local government purchasing. I realize that this is something that we've discussed in the past. But I know we have a couple of new members, so just wanted to make sure that, uh, that this was on there. So NRS three thirty two zero six five, uh, requires it for contracts which the estimated annual amount required to perform is more than a hundred thousand. There's advertisement required. We have to, um, do a solicitation and, um, there, there's a few other requirements there. So it does require that we have to, um, do a request for proposal, which is the process that we did. Um, those, the winning, uh, proposal that is, or, excuse me, back up. NRS three thirty two zero six five continued requires that, um, requires that we pick the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and NRS defines what that is. Um, so that's similar language about a hundred thousand dollar, um, contract is there. Um, but it defines what that lowest responsive and responsible bidder, um, how that can be judged. And so there's a number of factors. Um, A is price, B is conformance to specifications, C is qualifications of the bidder, including without limitation. The possession of or limit on any required license of the bidder. The financial responsibility of the bidder, the experience of the bidder and the ability of the bidder to perform the contract. Adequacy of the equipment of the bidder, past performance, performance schedule or delivery date. If the contract requires delivery of goods, actually, this one would not apply. G and H would not apply. Um, the best interest of the public and such other criterias may be set forth by the governing body or its authorized representative in the advertisement or solicitation as applicable. So, um, any, that, that letter J there has to have been spelled out in the RFP itself or in the RFP document. Um, and I believe we, as part of backup, we attached the actual RFP document just, uh, for a refresher for those that were here when we, when we issued it and as well as for new commissioners on the So just to kind of cover the process, the RFP was, um, well, I guess there was a, a step in here that I didn't cover, which was that we had met, uh, last summer as a, uh, board, including the board and myself and the former county manager had met last summer to discuss what should be in the RFP and to go through that. Uh, so based on that, I drafted up the RFP documents. And the board approved it and it was made available to the public in, in November second of twenty twenty two. All questions were due by November eighteenth and the answers were written, uh, were issued by, uh, November twenty third. Proposals were due by January fifth of this year and then proposal evaluations took place between January sixth and January twentieth. Um, the proposals were evaluated by four Lyon County employees independently and none were involved in the previous RFP process. So. So, um, to jump right in, I will, um, start just kind of with the comparison. This is based off of the comparison sheet that, um, that was in your packet previously. Um, and so going over the company overview, um, everything uh, was pretty similar to, um, the last time I went through this process. All of the proposals had evidence of good standing, um, all proposed to, um, sub, subcontract with DNS Waste. Um, you do have some, um, like backup that was included. Um, there was a letter from DNS was in there. I don't know if you all have a chance to read that. Um, that may be relevant to, um, to today's discussion. And then identified the key staff. Um, the three proposals, I should say, were CNS Waste Solutions of Nevada, Old Sessi Waste Services and Waste Management of Nevada Inc. Waste Management Holdings. Um, that's the parent company. And so, um, those were the three, three proposals that we received. Um, and I should also state before we get too far into this, before, um, we reviewed the proposals, we did go down a checklist that the board had asked that we put into the RFP that, it's kind of a pass no pass thing and there wasn't anything in any of the proposals that was, that was missing substantially enough to disqualify any of it. So no one was, was disqualified. And so that's, that's how we have the, um, the three proposals in front of us for that. So, um, proposed office locations, um, CNS proposed a location at twenty three Enterprise Way in Dayton. Um, Old Sessi, uh, proposed their, um, headquarters at twenty five Industrial Parkway and, um, Waste Management had their office location at fifty five sixty shoot drive in Carson City with plans to incorporate a customer service center or service office at their Dayton transfer station. I do want to point out something about CNS's proposal, a proposed location. Um, this kind of came up in a roundabout way, but I had a developer approach me about building a project on that site. And they are the owners of it. So that location has sold. So, um, and they said they do not have any intention of it becoming a, um, an office or, or transfer station. So I do want to make sure that, um, that that is clear. Um, criminal and civil disclosures, there were no criminal disclosures. There were, um, the, um, some civil disclosures that were that were made in, um, in your package. Um, there was more information provided in the actual RFP itself. Um, experience, um, this is again very similar to, um, what we saw in the last time we went through this process. With CNS, uh, listing the town of Prong, the town of Anarosa, town of Beatty, Inyo County, um, city of Susanville, Lassen County, um, city of Selma, city of Clear Lake, Lake County, uh, Ukiah Valley, Anderson Valley, California. Old Sessi listed Eureka County twenty nineteen to present, Churchill County, that's a non-exclusive, um, twenty seventeen to present, city of Fernley, that's a non-exclusive, um, no residential. Twenty thirteen, um, to present, city of Sparks. Um, I don't know how much detail you want me to go, go through all this. It was all in the, in the package, but I can, I can certainly read through all these. Um, Waste Management has the city of Reno, Washoe County, city of Sparks, Infinian Village, General Improvement District, Carson City, Story County, um, General Canyon or Canyon, General Improvement District, city of Fernley and Long Island. Proposed, uh, proposal for collection, um, each had varying hours of operation. Um, routing strategy was included in there. Um, if anybody has any specific questions, you can, um, just let me know. And the collection methodology, um, they were all pretty, pretty much on par with each other. They're listed, um, in each proposal, there was a list of vehicles that they had proposed to use for the, for the actual collection. Um, uh, Old Sessi has some existing vehicles and then they had proposed to purchase new vehicles as well. So I did want to point that out. So I think the plan would be for, for them to start with the, the existing vehicles and then, um, and then purchase, purchase new. Um, and then of course all the carts were, were industry standard. So the transfer stations, um, as I mentioned, that location for CNS, um, I do know has sold, um, and they are planning on building something else. So, um, I do want to, do want to point that out. Old Sessi had Ten Chase Drive listed and, um, then, uh, Waste Management had the existing transfer station in Sudro. Which is there currently. Uh, all of those properties do have the correct zoning. Now I know that was a question that come, had come up last time. So, um, we did check all of that. For Silver Springs, uh, there was, uh, twenty four, twenty five Almond Drive, that's already owned for CNS. Three thousand one Opal Avenue in Silver Springs for Old Sessi and, um, Waste Management, um, proposed to use the current location of the existing facility until they can site and locate a new facility. And they did propose a one million dollar bond for the purchase and completion of another station, substation. Um, as a part of this, um, hours of operation you can see are listed here. So if anybody has, doesn't, if nobody has any questions, I can, uh, move on. All right, customer service, um, again, uh, everybody proposed eight to five Monday to Friday. Once again, that, that location for CNS, um, will have, would have to be addressed, um, and, um, you, you can see the locations that the others have provided. And then there was a list of staff and, um, the training that would be required. Um, implementation plan, um, so, uh, CNS proposed this, uh, purchase or lease immediately following award, uh, same with, um, Old Sessi. And again, I, as I pointed out, they did have some existing vehicles. So container rollout, um, was expected to take five weeks for CNS, uh, new carts to be delivered and for Old Sessi, new carts were to be delivered by February twenty third, twenty twenty four. Remember this contract would begin in March of twenty twenty four. Um, and then, um, for all of those, um, Waste Management already has existing vehicles in place since they are the current, uh, franchisee. And they have the existing containers, so. And then each one listed different strategies for communicating to the, um, to the public what their plan was for, uh, for implementation. So now I want to, um, get into the price. Um, I did this a little bit differently this time. Um, so I do have um, the rates listed and then I have, um, a, a second sheet that compares the lowest price to the other prices. Um, last time, if you remember, I compared it to what the existing price was, but that really doesn't make a lot of sense because we're really comparing these three um, proposals. And so, um, looking at the residential um, Waste Management had the lowest price for, uh, actually, what happened?
You're done.
There we go. So just looking at the comparisons, Waste Management had the lowest price for all of the, um, residential collection services. Uh, there were a few fees that were, um, that, that were higher there. So you can see CNS had the lowest price for, um, the yard service fee, um, for walk-in, um, drive-in service, extra bulky item pickup, uh, extra bulky item pickup on non-service day, container replacement fee, um, action, um, activation, reactivation fees. Yeah, actually the container replacement fee, excuse me, I'm sorry, um, Waste Management and CNS were, uh, had at a, uh, identical price there. And then once again, here's the prices for the senior rate for the sixty four gallon can. It's fifteen twenty one was the lowest price, um, the current prices, current rates eighteen forty seven. Um, we didn't have, uh, ninety six gallon senior rate previously. That was something that the board had requested. Um, so that rate was eighteen oh four. The ninety six gallon with one cubic yard, the normal standard rate was twenty two fifty five. The current rate is twenty seven fourteen. Um, and the sixty four gallon, um, with no excess, the non-seeding rate for the sixty four was nineteen ninety eight. And then the extra, um, compartmental was, um, seven forty five. So moving on to the commercial, I should put the comparisons first, I think, uh, now that I look at it. So I'm just going to skip to that. Now, um, for all of the commercial collection, Waste Management had the lowest price on, um, the one cubic yard, the one and a half cubic yard, the two cubic yard, the three cubic yard, the four cubic yard, um, the six cubic and the six cubic yard. They also had the lowest commercial rate for the ninety six gallon commercial rate one time a week. CNS had the lowest rate for the ninety six, two and three time. Um, and again, you can see those price differences there, moving back. Um, I, I don't know if I need to go through each of these prices, um, all at once or all the lower prices, but they were provided. Did have one, um, that, that highlighted one. I, I was assuming was a typo. The fourteen thousand dollars for Old Sessi, um, I, I was kind of, I, I was again assuming that was a typo, but I didn't know what the actual rate was and we have to go with what, what was proposed. So, um, so anyway. So as far as there we go. There's the roll-off services. And again, um, Waste Management had the lowest price for the fourteen fifteen cubic yard, the twenty and the, um, thirty, the thirty close top, Old Sessi had the lowest price and the forty cubic yard, Old Sessi had the lowest price there. Impactor service, um, Waste Management had the lowest price on all of that. Um, with the exception of the fifteen yard. Um, and then the roll-off rate per yard that, um, for unlisted bin sizes was, uh, cheaper with waste as well as well with CNS Waste having the cheapest delivery. But they were all, they were pretty close. Um, here's the transfer station prices here. Um, and you can take a look at the, the comparisons, um, Waste Management had the lowest price. Um, most of that, there was, uh, the light metals per item, uh, Old Sessi had the lowest price. And, um, if you look at the emergency management stuff, uh, CNS Waste have, had the cheapest price. So getting to the scores and the recommendations.
Sure. Oh, excuse me. Are we going to go to this first? Are we going to hear from the?
Sure, um, excuse me, are, are we gonna go to this first, or are we gonna hear from the, what's the proposals first?
So we were not planning on having the proposers do a presentation today, and just having them talk at public comment, and, um. Of, of course, I'm open to whatever, however the chair and the board wants to run.
I, uh, we have two new commissioners, so they have to say.
I can, I can elaborate during the public comment.
Okay, so, Commissioner Hendricks and Commissioner Keller. That, that doesn't matter to them for the record. And, uh, that's, uh, I, I was thinking that if they wanted to make a comment at the beginning of public comments for, say, three minutes, then. We'll allow them to make a presentation at that time, and then go on to public comment.
Perfect, okay. All right, um, so then getting into our, um, recommendation, you can see the scores, these are the, the combined scores. From all four proposers, um, so. Each category had a total possible of forty, um. And so you can see how it worked out for all CNS, Lassessi and Waste Management. And so when you combine all the scores together, um, Waste Management scored the higher, uh, the highest, uh, on. The RFP, and so staff's recommendation is to go with Waste Management. When I'm available for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Haskin?
Go back to that last one.
Commissioner Keller, go ahead.
No, I was just looking at the experience that you're asking, what their experience was, or, or, uh, there was nothing about, uh. Because one has a clear advantage, because they are here. Right, but you also have their service to reflect on. Uh, what they did in the past, and was that included in there at all, and I'm speaking just from Silver Springs standpoint. Uh, we had a contract ten years ago, over ten years ago. Or how many years ago, and we still don't have a waste treatment. I mean, a, a transfer station in Silver Springs, it was on that first contract, so to me, that. I have to put that into consideration, and I don't know if this was brought in. Into this other stuff, and also, uh, the ability, you might be able to have, uh. Cheap prices, but if you're not getting the, like, the drop-off containers when you need them. Then what, what service is that, so their service in the past, I just, was that in part of that experience at all?
So obviously, the experience was not just limited to Lion County, and proposers could put forth their experience elsewhere, and, and were expected to put forth. Elsewhere, um, and I don't believe that there was any preferential points given based on their experience in Lion County. Um, it was, it was more broad than that, so, um, now as far as. Um, uh, there was multiple points to your, to your comments, so. As far as the transfer station, uh, the previous board had, um, had a hearing about this, and it just came up in the, in the last. Um, last time that we had this, and it seemed that there was an exception made in that hearing. Um, and I'd have to go back and look at what the actual meeting minutes said, I don't wanna misquote anything, but, um. The board was aware of the, the transfer station issue at that time, so. Um. Yeah.
Commissioner Keller, Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you, Chairman, Honkaday, um. But just a couple things on the. And I'm not expecting you to necessarily flip to the page and whatnot, but. On on-call collection of illegally dumped bulky items, it's in that RFP, or the. Poles will hear, but. Who pays for them to go out and get that again? It seemed like the county was on the hook.
For, no, so, um, I think that was a county serve, so that was for stuff that was in county right away, that the county noticed, that if, when.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, the, whoever wins the, the bid will have to do that.
I just, I'm just worried that that's gonna encourage illegal dumping, um, but. When I was reading through that, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Um, all right, and that, that was a small potatoes, the subcontractor for the Smith. Uh, if I may, Chairman, if you, the subcontractor plans to stay the same for Mason and Smith, just for the record in my. Right, we're gonna keep that stat, that stays status quo.
So, yeah, um, yes, however, I do wanna point out, there was, um. Public comment that was submitted to the board that did mention that, uh, the current subcontractor doesn't have a written agreement with.
That's what I was worried about, and I didn't know.
Or Lassessi, and I, I, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that would be something that would be worked out, but. Um, so I'm assuming that it, it would stay, but there is no written agreement, I guess, that's how it was proposed.
Right, because I'm guessing that if that changes, the residents from Mason and Smith may come unglued if. That changes, and it was because of our, we didn't include the parameters around that.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it was in the proposal, um, each of the three proposals, um, I'm just pointing to that public comment, it says there is. No agreement.
Right, because that was not, I didn't think that was up for negotiation, but when I read. Through the packet, I was like, I don't know if that's spelled out or not, so.
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, just a couple comments, if I may, this isn't necessarily a question, but I. I feel like I'm obviously part of the problem on why this wasn't. Resolved back in last summer, so I do apologize to everybody, um. I did find the workshop in Dayton to be very informative, and I, I just wanna, uh. Let everyone know that I appreciated all of the input, and I found it very informative from all the professionals that were there. Um, I learned a lot, and, uh, and I found, I found that, that evening, um, not just informative. But, uh, uh, I appreciated that was put together, and, and, uh, it, it helped. Me work through a lot of stuff, um, and then also. Um. Okay, sad. Uh, that's it for now, Chairman, thank you.
Um, you wanna, okay, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, 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 sorry, um. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm kinda going along, along the same lines as this Commissioner Keller was, the, these rankings were done. Based strictly off the RFP with, with no consideration given for past performance?
Well, past performance was, uh, experience was part of it, um. As part of the RP process, and I know we discussed this back in the meeting in Dayton, and everybody has to be treated equally and the same, so it's kinda hard to put a. Condition on something that, that.
Well, I, I just questioned some of, some of the scores, knowing the history in, in this county, and. So if you just look at the scores alone, that really doesn't tell you the whole story, and. I just, I just have a problem with this. But, go ahead.
Commissioner Hendricks.
I see that, uh, Waste Management put up a bond, um, to ensure that the work will be done building. Uh, Silver Springs Transfer Station, and the other two proposers would have to both build. Two transfer stations, what guarantee do we have that that work would be completed and in a timely manner?
There is no bond, um, there was no bond requirement for that, they do have a performance bond of a hundred thousand dollars, and it's part of the. Um, RFP, but, um, but it was limited to that. So essentially, um, the contract would be our mechanism for employees.
Okay.
Anything else?
Not yet.
Okay, I just, uh, you know, my comments were that, uh, I, I think that. More or less implies that the, uh, Lassessi and CNS will attempt to set up a contract with DNS. Or Mason Valley and Smith Valley, but that's the implication based on the input we got from, uh, DNS. Whether they're, they'll work that out between them or not, I have no idea, but I do know where, where they're coming from at this point. Um. I think all the questions that. Are important have been asked. And, um, basically, I'll ask for, uh, input from the, um. Different companies, if they wouldn't mind coming up, and, and we'll start out with the first one on the list, CNS, if there's someone here that wants to come up and. Give us a. Short. Bit of information on your company and. Your proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board, Damon Shea, CNS Waste Solutions. First, just wanna say thank you for the opportunity again to participate in the, um, in the RFP process. And, um, I didn't really, I didn't, wasn't sure the whole, you know, how this is gonna play out, and. So, I just wanted to keep my notes brief, but just. That we love, um, the company loves rural locations, and even thrive in, in Lion County based on our, our company structure. And we have the resources, backing, you know, to perform well physically, but mainly locally, as that seems to, uh, come up. Come up a lot, CNS waste might be owned by a larger company, but at heart, we are a small, locally operated. Organization. Right now, we are not local as Lassessi and Waste Management, but we would. So we'll set up a yard, office, house the trucks here, equipment, transfer stations. Um, office staff would be local, I would be involved with local decision-making authority. And in the locations that I have been physically, Perump, Nevada, and then Lassen County now. When, um, when we partner with the community. We're involved, engaged, it's a living organism that we, you know, and we base. Base our business off the local assessed needs of the community, so. That was just kinda the main things I just wanted to hit on, the numbers Andrew showed, and, and all the backing and, and the details, but. Um, that's where we kind of. Hit our aces, just understanding the local community and working around it, so each one's different. Perump from Lassen, so Lion would be no different, so thank you for your consideration, and, and for all the staff hours put in for this process.
Yeah, thank you for your input, question, question, okay, Commissioner Henderson.
Um, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I just have a, a question, since we're talking about transfer stations, I'm, wanna talk about those a little more. What's your anticipated timeline, should you be awarded the contract to having transfer stations constructed?
Uh, I would, I don't have specifics, but I would, we would get on it as soon as we, you know, got out, and. We have the information, kind of things ready to go, we have the property in, in Silver Springs, that's, that's ours, and we just would start the permitting and. Get every hand, you know, all the hands on deck, so I don't.
And, and is your company construction transfer stations elsewhere?
Uh, I believe, well, now that, so, it's kinda hard, when we first started it, we were just CNS, and now we have a larger.
Right.
Corporation that has a lot of backing and has, has done that, and we would start putting the, the pieces in place. We haven't really fully hit on it till we were, you know, but we do have plans.
That, that's, that's fair, thank you.
Commissioner Hendricks.
I do have a question. In, um, in what part of your proposal it said that, um, with the ninety-six gallon service, you get six additional. Thirty-two gallon cans, but then back farther, it said that those cans had been discontinued. If that was no longer in place, so I'd like some clarification on whether or not those are or are not allowed.
I would, I'll have to double check, I, I don't, we, remember, I figure we go, we went off the. You know, what was required in the RP, but I will, um, I'm not familiar with that part right now, so I'll go take a look, but I would think. That we honored it, I apologize.
You good?
Yeah.
Anybody on this end? No? Commissioner Keller, anything else? Okay. So I believe next to DL Sessi. Give us an intro and. Do your plan.
Well, I've been waiting this day. Chairman Commissioners, my name is Philly Olesse, the company president, assessing waste services. We're the only locally owned waste hall to respond to Lion County Solid Waste RFP. Sessi Waste Services currently services a vast geographical area here in northern Nevada and eastern Nevada. We are the franchise holders, exclusive franchise holders for Eureka County, Nevada, in eastern Nevada. We are based in Mount House, Nevada, that's our corporate office, world headquarters, as we call it. We have a full-service customer service center, ready to go tomorrow, I could turn the switch on tomorrow if I needed to. We have a full maintenance facility there, paint booth, welders, you name it, we have it. We have the computer routing software in place, ready to go. I would ask this commission today to award me the, uh, exclusive contract for Lion County, and yes, we will use DNS in the south. Any questions?
Questions, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What's, what's your anticipated timeline for building a transfer station?
Uh, I need a transfer station ASAP, I plan to have the open one up. I don't think it'll be day one, I'm gonna say ninety days, as long as I can get the concrete in, in the fall. I can't pour concrete in weather like this, and the open one will be up first, then the, uh, Dayton one will follow. Yeah, I expect a little gap there.
Okay.
We are gonna put a temporary transfer station in our main yard that we already own, uh, for day one, so there will be no issues there.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Hendricks.
That was my question.
Commissioner Jacobson, any questions? Commissioner Keller, questions?
I do have one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, the RFP was for, um, the weight of the container could be seventy-five pounds, and I believe your response said that you can't do that. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that's a worker safety issue, uh, fifty pounds, there's only one, one operator, one driver on that truck. That's what, that's how we came up with that.
Okay.
Any further, oh, Commissioner Keller.
Is that because of the design of your truck, or?
No, that's just a, a worker safety issue, uh, it's, you gotta lift seventy-five pounds five hundred times a day, it's gonna beat you up.
No, yeah, okay, well, I was just thinking of the trucks, they lift them, the containers themselves, so.
Talk, the seventy-five pound limit is on the extra bags.
Okay.
Or the bundles or stuff like that.
Gotcha.
The carts, uh, to whatever the truck left. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, representative from Waste Management, okay.
Have a long day. Mister Chair and members of board, Kendra Costalecki, Waste Management for the record. I wanna thank you for the opportunity to provide this bid. Although RFPs can be a slow and very painstaking process, it is important for the public to know. That this is the most, and the best opportunity for you to get the best scope of services and prices available from all bidders. In the most open and transparent way. And, and that's based on the services that you need now, not services that may have happened ten years ago, for the population that was there ten years ago. As commissioners, you unfortunately have the occasion to hear from some dissatisfied customers. WM hates it when we fail service, and we strive to present it, uh, prevent it, excuse me. Unfortunately, sometimes we are unsuccessful, and in our work together, I hope that you have found me and our team to be responsive to your concerns. It's also important to point out that there is a silent majority of WM customers who appreciate their service here in Lion County. And they like their drivers, and they like that they have their problems resolved quickly. Voluntary customer service, um, surveys are conducted every time contact is made with WM. While many of us will only stay on the line with a customer service survey when we have something to complain about. WM customers in Lion County have stayed on the line with Concentrix. For that outside ser- service, uh, survey company long enough to score WM an eight point nine out of ten points over just the last twelve months. In response to claims made by some that WM is not local. I ask you to look at the people in the room, we can't provide garbage service remotely, we are local, and we're here in the community. And while we're here, there are more of our staff out there that are holding up the important job of collecting waste today. So that, we're glad that you moved this agenda item up, so we could go and join them again today. And there are roughly three hundred and sixty WM employees in northern Nevada, seventeen percent of them either work or live in Lion County. So we're also contributing to the economy. And that does not include the employees. And that does not include the employees at DNS with which WM has a longstanding and supportive relationship in which we hope to continue. WM is invested in this community and we look forward to continuing to grow.
Um, questions or? Please, please stop. Commissioner Henderson has some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So your proposal, the Silver Springs transfer station, you estimated it'd take two years to complete?
Uh, that's at the outside. That's when the bond takes effect. We, we hope to.
Well, uh, let's talk about that bond. What, what's that bond actually for?
Um, to ensure that we are going to give you a transfer station.
That's not what it reads. And it says in here that you, that the Waste Management proposed to offer Lyon County performance bond of $1 million. If Waste Management fails to make good faith efforts to complete construction of a transfer station within 36 months of award, okay, not the 24, now we're up to 36, then it will be RFP, then the bond will be forfeited to provide funding directly to Lyon County to construct a transfer station. So you haven't built it for 10 years. And now you're going to say you might do it for two, in two years, but if you don't do it in three years, then we'll, then we'll give Lyon County a million dollars to build it and finish it, what we haven't done. Correct?
I respect what you're saying. I'd like to.
Is, is that correct though or not?
Uh, well, it is, but I'd like to frame it if you don't mind. Uh, we're looking at that as a penalty if, if that obligation isn't met. Our intention is to meet the.
How, how is that a penalty? If you, if you give Lyon County money to finish the job that you didn't do, that you would have to spend money to do, how is that a penalty?
Well, we haven't done it yet because.
Haven't done it for a long time.
But, but given the opportunity, we're absolutely going to do it.
Okay. It's 10 years, but enough opportunity.
Um, Commissioner Keller.
So I'm going to go on the same thing that Wes just talked about. Uh, in Silver Springs, I don't know if you know my history. I've been, I was the chair of the advisory board out there for 15 years. So I got every complaint about it. One of the hardest places, we were the biggest growing county, which at, at one time. And everybody wanted to be here. Your business was going great and everything else. We took it, it took a risk on when we employ someone who, it's a risk we take on. And you guys take on the same risk by signing on the contract and you do what you're going to do. Uh, I had to listen to it for, for a long time. I'm not saying any of your employees are any of the problem at all. I know they're all local and I appreciate the work they do. I appreciate what the other, uh, the other proposals about being local. But this is a, a, a track record. And when we all went through that major, uh, recession, we all wanted to clean up our areas because when everything went downhill, we had to come back to uphill. And it was like pulling teeth. And I'm not saying you, I'm not saying your workers, I'm saying corporate to try to get it cleaned up. And it was more of a burden on the lowest, uh, the people that made the lowest amount of money in Lyon County had the biggest burden. They had to sit there and not only try to pick up the, what they had less money to clean up the property with, but they had to travel for longer distances to drop, drop it off. Then finally, we got one in Silver Springs was a dumpster. In other words, we couldn't get a, uh, drop off trailer, I mean, a, a dump trailer and go, because I have a dump trailer and I actually volunteered to give it to anybody, any organization, anybody that wanted to use it. Go pick it up, thinking they could go dump it off. We don't have a transfer station to dump it off. We have to unload it by hand into the thing. So it was just one after another. So do you understand? I do have, that is a history. That is a bad, very bad history, uh, that I'm not happy with. And now it's like, oh, that was the past. Let's move on forward. It's a new beginning. You understand where I'm coming from on this. We've already took a risk. So now where's the, now it should be, you guys should be stepping up and saying, uh, wait, how do, can we correct this? Can we correct this? You guys still haven't done it, even though we've had extensions because you want to wait to see if you have a contract. To me, this should have been done with the last contract. So it should have been done, even if over the last year during extensions.
May, may I respond?
Yes.
And, and so, and, and I appreciate where you're coming from. I, I really do appreciate that. And you may know, I worked with the previous Commissioner Keller. I came into the job during the pandemic, so we did work to try to find some solutions and, and, and continue to try to make some, some forward progress. I do want to point out that for your particular area, Silver Springs, we did get, um, 200 and WM didn't ask for this. 200 of your residents came forward with a petition to support WM's bid, uh, during the last RFP process. So I, I understand that there is some, some animosity, but, but we do have customers who are, were appreciative of their service and would like to continue with WM.
Any other comments? Thank you. You're off the hot seat.
Like that District Attorney Ry come up and talk a little bit about the transfer station issue and so.
Absolutely. We will let him talk. District Attorney Ry.
Steve Ry, District Attorney. And I just wanted to clarify a little bit for the record, that the transfer station has been an issue discussed several times before this board. But it was, uh, the action of this board that indicated they did not have to build a, a transfer station for a period of time. So I, there is some confusion. I understand contention about that. I just wanted to bring up that history.
Thank you, sir. Public comment? Do we have any public comment?
And if you do have public comment, please line up over here as we've done.
So for the record, Brad Cia, the area public secretary director for WM for Northern Nevada and Northern California. It's good to see you again. Uh, I want to congratulate, uh, Commissioner Keller, Commissioner Hendricks and your appointment. It's good to see you. Um, I want to revisit just a few of the items that were brought up. I'm going to try to do it in a public comment. But as far as the transfer station bond goes, we have to tie the bond to something. So we have to tie the bond to a completion if we don't complete it. Penalty enforcement, whatever the word is that you want to use, we have to have that bond money tied to completion of the transfer station. If you're so focused on the transfer station, I would wonder why you wouldn't want to use that money to complete it because it seems to be that's going to be the issue at hand. I also want to address that, yes, you're right, there is history here. But this RFP is based on, kind of go forward. I think we're showing you our commitment, not just in the rates, but also in putting up that bond. Um, I want to address the local, right? The local piece that came up last time and it came up this time. Take a look out. Every single one of these people here serve your community right now. Some of them are locals, some of them are taxpayers, some of them are veterans. And they are committed, not just in service now, but in service in the future. And I don't want you to look at the logo on the shirt. I want you to look at the person that's in that shirt. Because that's who's going to be servicing your community, not the logo. I think this is important to address. We want to keep this contract. We're committed to keeping this contract. I think we put forth a great RFP, but I think you should be proud. And thank you, Andrew, for the great job that he did in terms of putting this together. Um, because this was a really transparent and full and complete and complex process. I think the benefit is, is that the residents and the businesses of Lyon County are going to get the best, the portable service, the best price. I think three times. Can you sign in, Andrew?
Thank you. Yep, sign in, please. I see Mr. Foley's walking up. Okay, we have one on Zoom for public comment. Vita Keller.
I just wanted to go on the record. I mean, I, I'm listening to this whole million dollar bond, but nobody is even addressed to what the cost would actually be to purchase the land and to, uh, construct this, uh, transfer station in Silver Springs. So my question is the million dollar bond, does it actually cover the cost? And then I want to point out the fact that, you know, going through this, um, you know, they Waste Management continually says that they're trying to make things better and address the sins of the past. And hey, we're going to get a transfer station. We're going to bond it in Silver Springs. Oh, the service days are Tuesday through Thursday, three days a week. Not even a weekend day, a Saturday for those people that need to get to the dump that work Monday through Friday. So again, Silver Springs is being, you know, handed, being slight handed here. Um, we'll take care of you three days in the middle of the week. If you're not available, oh, well. What, there's no accommodation for us in Silver Springs. And those 200 people that might have rode in and said, hey, you know, Waste Management is great. Our drivers are great. I'll give them that. We got wonderful drivers out here, but corporate still ignores our community. I really think that this needs to be addressed or looked at. I mean, Ossessi's and CNS um, are offering, you know, more days. Um, Ossessi's was five days. Uh, but there's a Saturday, even if it wasn't five days, there's a Saturday there for us. They're not even offering that from Waste Management. I'm done.
Thank you. I don't see any other public comment on Zoom. Uh, I think Mr. Foley.
I do want, Andrew Haskin, for the record, I'm sorry, I do also want to address the, the local issue. Um, I've had discussions with the district attorney and for the purposes of this RFP, all three companies would be considered local companies. So I do want to make that point as well.
Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, for the record, and for the record, I want everyone to know I live in the city of Urington. This won't affect me in any way, shape or form personally. I have no dog in the fight personally. However, when I take a look at the rates and I look at the number of citizens and the difference between those rates that propose, I think that that should be a, a significant factor for the board to consider. The second piece is if there are higher rates chosen instead of the lowest, lowest, uh, rate provider, that's also going to affect Lyon County's budget for indigent services because we're going to be having to subsidize higher amounts and possibly more people who are indigent characters. So I just wanted to put that on the record. And again, you guys know where to find me.
Thank you, sir. I was going to do the 30 second timer, but you did good. Okay. I see no further public comment. Uh, I think we, at this point, we can look for a motion.
Um, can we have some final thoughts?
Final thoughts? Yep, you got, no problem.
Comments, thoughts? As shallow as my thoughts might be, right? I brought up, I mentioned earlier the, the Dayton meeting. And, uh, they, we kind of did it towards the end of the evening, um, kind of a uh, what, what's, uh, what we're looking for. And I was very clear. Bottom line is price for the weekly service. After our last, uh, round of this, the RFP and, and awarding the bid, um, did hear from a lot of people that were upset that we are raising the prices. What right do we have to raise our, our monthly bills? Don't have that money. Love our service, et cetera. And I too do remember those bills. I, when I, when, when I see right or wrong, this is me, uh, when I see that, um, uh, just for a couple of examples, uh, 64 gallon senior rate being increased um, by $40 for the year, uh, and a 96 gallon one cubic yard, uh, bin being raised $55 a year. I, I, I'm not comfortable having imposing what is essentially a $40 tax per year on these people. And I, and I look at it as a tax because we are increasing their prices, um, and, uh, that is why I will be, um, I will be, uh, voting, uh, that we award this to Waste Management. So on that, on the price alone, thank you, Chairman.
Is that a motion?
No, that is, I want to hear everybody else if they have thoughts.
Any other thoughts?
Um, I, I do think that there's a perception that maybe the existing people might have more of an advantage because they've been here and they have all the equipment in place. But I do think they also face a disadvantage because they're the ones who've had to endure the complaints. We don't know if the other two proposers would have the same number of complaints in the same period of time.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Hendricks. Um, Commissioner Henderson, any final thoughts?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just want to talk about the, the cost for a minute. Actually, when, when you really look at the current rates that are being charged now, who's, how somehow magically they found a way to lower their rates substantially because there's competition. The, the difference between the current rate now and Ossessi's proposal is a dollar 65 a month. And the difference between the current rate now, I'm talking 96 gallons with the extra cubic yard is, um, $3.63 more a month. So dollar 65 times 12 doesn't come up to 40 bucks. So I have.
Commissioner Keller.
So my last thing is just a comment. I know out here in the worlds, it's not like a, or a big city or anything else. And I was really impressed with, uh, just certain things that certain people say. And CNS, when they, when they got up and, and talked, I really liked how they were talking about how every community is different, their needs are different, and the people are different. And that's the way it works out in the, in the rural communities. We don't look for loopholes in contracts or anything else. When we say we're going to do something, we do it. Shake your hand, move on, and we honor everything that we do. And it's not up against a corporate machine or anything like that. And to me, it's, it's now to come in and say that we're part of the community and everything else. I hate to tell you, I have to agree with the county manager. All of you are going to be local because everybody that works for you is going to be local. You're, everyone's going to be picking up our garbage cans. So that part I agree on, but as far as the corporate part, I do have problems with it as far as the, as, um, I, I wish they would do their word and not with the corporate contract of how can we weasel out of something to make 10 more cents out of a bean counter? That's just my opinion right now. So I'll see about how this goes out.
Any other comments? My, basically my comment is that when we look at all of our other contracts in the county, um, be it four million, five million, $6 million for construction contracts, uh, we find the construction contract that is the lowest bidder. And that means you add up all their prices and you put them together and what is the best price for the county and the people who live in the county? So I would have to say that, uh, is a final statement. Uh, we do have to go back to the Nevada revised statute and look at all of the things that, uh, our county manager presented to us on screen and think about, uh, our motion here and, and our vote. So having said that, I'm looking for a motion. Uh, I believe, um, Commissioner Jacobson had started, but sounded like a motion and wanted to hear everybody's thoughts. Are you ready to make a motion then? Commissioner Jacobson.
Um, I was actually making comment, but I, I will, uh, take a stab at a motion here. Um, oh, I turned the wrong page. Chairman Hockaday, I would like to make a motion that we award the Lyon County Solid Waste Disposal Franchise, uh, based on the responses requested for the request for proposal number 22 slash 10, direct staff to enter into a contract negotiations with Waste Management.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a, um, motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. And at this point, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, we have a three, two. I have Commissioner Hendricks, Commissioner Henderson and Commissioner Hockaday with aye. I'm, I'm sorry.
Jacobs.
Jacobson, yeah. So, uh, correction there. Commissioner Hendricks, Commissioner Jacobson, Commissioner Hockaday, aye. Nays were Commissioner Henderson and Commissioner Keller. So the ayes have it. And our new awardee is Waste Management. Congratulations, Waste Management and all our employees. Thank you for showing up to the meeting. I'll give you a moment to. Thank you for showing up to the meeting. I'll give you a moment to get back to work. Okay, uh, we are on item, back to item seventeen, Advisory Board, uh, seventeen A for possible action. Approve the rules and regulations for Hillcrest Cemetery in Smith Valley, and this is requested by myself. You may have had a chance to look at those. The, um, the rules and regulations were basically presented at the Advisory Board a couple of meetings. They were approved and, and they were being, um, held up because of the price that the commission came up with a little later at a thousand dollars a plot. Um, so we were holding up on that document until the price, and then somehow or another, it, uh, kind of sat and did not get approved right away. So it's, it's basically kind of cleaning up here to make sure that the rules and regulations for Hillcrest Cemetery are adopted by the commission since we run everything in the county. So I, um, you have a copy of it?
I did have.
Yeah.
I lost it. But I have a question.
A question, yes.
I, I thought we had already set rules for all the county cemeteries.
We are the only, uh, Smith Valley is the only one with its own uh, cemetery board. And so we do run underneath the county, of course, but we take care of all the business that goes on. We have a cemetery director and the money goes directly to the county, just like everywhere else, but the county runs everything else. So it's kind of a, an old fashioned situation where it's been there for a long time.
But are, are these, then the question is, are these rules the same as the rules for the other cemeteries?
Um, I'm not sure, but we do have Mr. Homestead who can vouch for this because he was part of the whole procedure.
That's it, facility director for record. Um, I think we copied, when we went through and we did these, we kind of took off of, um, the rest of the counties, the one we have for Central. Um, my idea is within a year, just have one set of rules and we're done with it. But Smith Valley was still outdated, showing the two hundred fifty for a plot and all that. And so we wanted to get this through. We should have got through sooner. That was everything going on. It just kind of got dropped. So if we can get this approved now, then I'll, I'll work on one set of rules. And if there's, is any difference, we'll state that in the rules, except for whatever cemetery.
Commissioner Keller.
So as all rules and regulations, they'll change over the years and if I bought a lot, uh, plot, not a lot, not going to build on it.
Mostly.
Yes.
If, if I was to purchase a, a plot now and the rules and regulations change later, is there a thing in here that says the, that I'm not grandfathered in or? So should it, so something should stayed in there that that's current rules that can be changed to current rules? Do you see what I'm saying? Like if in the past you could plant a tree, now you can't plant a tree. Later on, it might even get stricter. And if I already bought it, according to, yeah, but it should stayed in there that you'd have to use current regulations.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and I'd have to say, just kind of, if you buy a lot and you build on it twenty years from now, you got to comply with whatever is in effect twenty years from now. So I look at it, the same thing we've had, uh, in, in, uh, Hillcrest. There are some, um, fences and monuments and things such as that that are much bigger than anything in the regulation, but they, they were done during their time.
Yeah.
So the regulation didn't, uh, make them change anything, but from this point on, we're looking at speci- specific requirements.
I just wanted it in there so that someone doesn't come later and said, I bought it, planning on putting this in. You can say, yeah, but that's not the new regulation.
It does make it a little harder on me anyway, having another board to deal with, because there's some territories we just, we just handle it in-house. Um, but that's how, that's how they set it up. And so it works for them. So no problem.
Mr. Hockaday?
Yes, Commissioner.
Our Chairman Hockaday, sorry. Um, thank you, sir. So I'm married. I pass away. Can my spouse purchase a lot, a plot, lot, plot to be next to me even though they're still alive?
Sure, you, you can purchase, you can purchase a whole block if you want.
Right. So no one's going to get a plug pull to get in there next to their spouse tomorrow?
No, as long as you reserve the spot, you know, pay for the spot, you know, the plot next to you, you know, if you buy two plus one for the husband and the wife. Or if you want to be buried on top of each other.
Yes.
Um, you can do that, but as long as you pay for it, it's your, it's your deed of piece of, piece of land.
Roger that. Thank you.
Because I purchased four plots as a family plot at Hillcrest. So, yeah, get them while they're cheaper.
Yeah.
Right?
Also, you can't buy it for two fifty when it was two fifty and a few years from now say, hey, I don't need it. So I want a thousand dollars.
Yeah. So it was in, it's not investment property?
No. You get back whatever you paid for it.
Yep.
Depends on what you know.
Inflation goes on.
Sell it, you can't sell it like real estate to another person.
Yeah.
It has to go back to the county and the county resells it.
So are there any other questions for Mr. Homestead or for me? If not, I'll and any public comments on the, uh, situation? Nothing on Zoom. It's probably the only place we would have them here. Doesn't look like it. So, um, Commissioner comments, public comments, how about a motion? If nobody wants to do it, I'll do it. Okay.
You request?
Motion, approve the rules and regulations for Hillcrest Cemetery in Smith Valley.
Second.
Hey, I made the motion and Commission Hind, Commissioner Henderson made the second. All those in favor, say aye. Five, zero, anybody nay? All right, let's move on. Eighteen A for possible, well, county manager report, eighteen A for possible action. Approve a sixteen-month contract with Porter Group LLC for federal government affairs counting services. The contract amount is a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars per month, plus allowable travel expenses with thirty thousand to be funded from contingency for the remainder of fiscal year twenty twenty-three. This was requested by Commissioner Henderson, uh, a couple of meetings ago, and I believe we have county manager Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, Lang County Manager, for the record. Um, yeah, so as, as you already stated, this was, uh, requested by Commissioner Henderson originally. Um, we had, uh, you'll remember, we had a discussion, um, actually have a little bit of background here. Or does the editors block there, but, um, currently we don't have a federal lobbyist. Most of the counties around us do. And, um, so Commissioner Henderson brought this, um, to the forefront and requested that we, we take a look at this. So at the January nineteenth, B O C C meeting, um, the commissioner voted unanimously to direct the, the county manager to do some research on the subject. Figure out what it would cost and, and bring information back. While I was in Washington DC for the Naco Conference, we actually met with, uh, the Porter Group and talked to them about their services and requested a proposal. The Porter Group's one of the companies that, uh, um, a lot of the other surrounding counties use. They're very good at what they do. And so, um, it was, uh, it was really productive. And so, um, they sent us a proposal which was attached in your packet, um, for seventy-five hundred dollars per month for a sixteen-month contract. That's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the contract period. And, um, what that gets us is the Porter Group will update the county on relevant executive proposals, legislation under consideration, proposed and adopted administrative rules and regulations and other Washington DC developments. So advise and consult on behalf of the county with members of Congress and including staff and relevant committees, the White House, and relevant federal agencies or departments. For example, the US Department of Interior, US Bureau of Land Management, US Department of Commerce, US Small Business Administration, US Department of the Treasury, US Department of Housing, on and on. That's a big paragraph. I'm not going to go through each one of them. But they will, um, um, you know, basically help us, um, and consult with us on behalf of the county and with those agencies. They'll secure and furnish, uh, detailed information as may be available on federal programs in which the county indicates an interest, so different grant programs and that type of thing. Um, they provide a lot of support for that. When requested to do so by the county, they will review and comment on proposals for which the county, um, is preparing to submit. So different grant proposals, different, uh, different types of funding mechanisms that the federal government has to offer. Um, we will send them to the Porter Group and they will, um, provide comment and, um, help set us up so that we have the best possible, um, chance of getting, getting those funds. Um, they'll contact federal agencies on the county's behalf when the county, uh, when county applications are under consideration. Um, this is a big part of what they do. So when you submit for grant, um, grant funding, that's not the end of it. Um, a lot of it is, uh, working with the, the, um, different, um, issuing agencies and, um, and talking them, talking with them and answering questions and, and kind of being that in-between piece. Um, and then they will participate in periodic status meetings and provide reports and direct, uh, as directed by the county manager with detail the activities undertaken on the county's behalf. Now, in addition to that, uh, they will help with our community project funding, uh, requests. So these are direct appropriations with Congress, uh, um. And this is something that I'm, I'm working on right now. Um, um, the deadline is actually March tenth on the, on the House side and March seventeenth on, um, on the Senate side. So essentially March tenth for all, but, um, these are the, the, um, kind of the earmarked funds that get put into, um, the different grant grant programs and the different funding buckets that are available. So the Porter Group will, um, support Lang County's efforts to obtain community project funding. Um, they will coordinate with the county and members of the Nevada Congressional Delegation and their staffs to arrange virtual meetings in which the county will have the opportunity to provide information regarding its community-based projects. They'll assist the county in preparing a competitive CPF submission using existing congressional guidance. They'll organize follow-up documentation to gain and maintain congressional support during the course of the request for presentation to the relevant committees of jurisdiction in both the US House and the House of Representatives and the Senate, and they'll work with our congressional staff to advocate for the progress of the county's CPF requests and their inclusion in federal appropriations legislation. So when we were in Washington DC, we had meetings with our delegation, um, specific to community project funding, trying to get more federal dollars into the county. Um, and, I mean, every every meeting we had with staff or, or with, well, member of the delegation, one of the first questions I asked is who's representing you in DC? And, uh, we were not currently represented. We mentioned that, um, that we were considering the Porter Group and, um, they said, perfect. We work really well with them. So I think that's, that's some pretty good feedback. There. So to talk a little bit more about the community project funding, um, I've actually been working since we got back, um, to put together a list of projects that we're ready to go with now for different funds. Um, and so, um, my plan is to include these as our, our requests for funding this year and realizing that we won't get funding for all of the projects, but sometime, because they come out of different pots of money, um, one, one may be, you know, out of fund. So we want to have extras in the, in the backup, um, in the queue, I guess, so that we can, um, so we have a better chance of getting some federal dollars there. So our top priority would be the Ramsey Weeks reconstruction. That's about a ten point three million dollar project. Take the county a long time, um, if we have to pay out of our cash to build that, that's going to take a while to, to save up. Um, and so, um, that's going to, that's obviously a priority. We have several water and wastewater projects that we're taking a look at. So the Smoky Hills Water Main Replacement in Dayton, that's a, almost a three million dollar project. Um, that's a water line that we have in existence currently that's currently shut off and broken because, um, yeah, there was a, uh, we had a series of breaks and wanted, um, again, if we don't get some outside dollars, Lang County will be paying that entire three million dollars out of our, our funds. Um, expansion of the Mobile Crisis Response Team, um, it's Human Services and this Holmes Group, um, that was a request that they put in. The Miller and Iasi realignment, we had several public comments, um, at the meeting earlier today about that. So we've included that as one of our requests. That's about a two point two million dollar project. There's a Dayton sewer main and a manhole rehabilitation.
Worker access cover.
What was that?
The, the correct term is worker access cover.
Oh, all right.
Yeah. People, people hold.
All right. Anyway, you can see here, we have a lot of different requests. Um, to- total for this year that we're, that we're putting in is twenty-three million dollars. Um, you know, that's less than half, or, uh, this contract with the Porter Group is less than half a percent of that. Again, I don't anticipate that we would get, um, funding for every one of these projects. If we, um, I mean, if we got one of them, I would be happy, but, uh, you know, I hope that, hope to maybe try and get a couple of our top priorities there. So, um, and, and I think that, that I think that having representation there is really key to that, to us being able to get these funds. And I want to stress, you know, I talked about it earlier, but it's not just the community project funding that we're talking about. It's the other grant, uh, grants that are out there. We really need somebody that's advocating on behalf. Um, I talked to some of my counterparts at other counties. Um, like I said, most of them have, um, have representation in DC. I won't rat anybody out, but so, uh, but just one of my counterparts said, if you don't have representation, you really need to think about doing that. That's, um, another one said that they use the Porter Group and that, um, they stopped using the Porter Group for a couple of years, and he said he didn't even want to tell the, tell me how much it costs that county in funds. So, um, I think that it's, it's worth a shot. This is something that Lang County hasn't done in the past. We've never applied for a community project funding in the past. So, um, but I think we need to try and get more federal dollars in here so that, um, so that we're not paying for these projects out of our general fund. Nevada is one of the few states that actually sends out more federal tax dollars than it receives. So we need to do our part to try and get some of that money back here. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I do know the Porter Group is on, um, on Zoom in case anybody has any questions of them. And, uh, yeah.
Commissioner Henderson?
I, I'd like to know how, how you chose this particular group.
Um, again, we, we met with them in DC, um, and, uh, they came pretty, pretty well recommended. A lot of the other counties in the area, in the supporter group as well, and they may be, even be able to tell, tell the group, uh, which counties, uh, they're, they represent. So.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and, yeah, I, I obviously I requested this agenda item and I'm very, very, um, passionate about this. I think everybody has heard me say over and over, we do not get enough federal dollars. And that I'm tired of picking up the newspaper, going online and seeing that county right next to us got this many millions of dollars or just kind of got this many millions of dollars and we didn't get any. And I didn't realize until I think late last year that we weren't represented at the federal level. And that should have been a question I asked day one when I came in. Because we definitely need representation there. We do, with, with the exception of Ms. Holmes' group, uh, uh, human services and the grants that she brings in, we don't bring in it hardly any federal dollars. And it, and we don't have the expertise in the county to do that. And even if we had the expertise in the county, it would be at least one full-time position, if not two. And you still have to be in Washington. You still have to talk to the agencies. You still have to talk to the congressional delegation. And you still have to be in Washington. You still have to talk to the agencies. You still have to talk to the congressional delegation. And I've, I've known and worked with the Porter Group with, you know, back when I was with the that Association of Counties and back when I worked for the Battle League of Cities. You know, and they have a relationship with all of our delegation. It's not just, I mean, John, you know, Congressman Porter was a Republican. But they, they're, their company is set up to where they are bipartisan. They work with both, both parties, both, you know, our, our members of our delegation that are Democrat, the one member that is Republican right now. When we, when we were meeting with, uh, with the Porter Group, we were back in Washington. You know, A- A- Andrew had prepared a, a briefing document that had lists some of the programs and we're talking to, to Mr. Gresh, uh, the Porter Group and he's going, oh, I, I, he, he, you see him running through it in his head. He knows what pot of monies might be available for this. And I, I know, I know a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money. But this is an investment. This is not an expense. Now, you know, our, our last meeting, we had an agenda item to possibly bring on a, a second, second lobbyist for the, for Nevada legislator session. And to me, that is an expense. Okay. Because what that lobbyist is doing is going out there defending Lyon County and trying to keep us from unfunded mandates and other bad things that the legislators do. This is an investment. And the, the, the potential return on that investment is just amazing. And this is something I really hope you guys will consider. Um, I know it's new for Lyon County, but you know, 16 months, if we don't see something at the end of 16 months, something around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but I'm pretty sure we'll get some more than some. I'm done.
I was going to say everything he said. He just came first. I did want to point out Fernley did recently, uh, I think last Tuesday went with Porter Group. And, uh, so that would be within our county and some of those things like the lands bill, we can kind of work together with Fernley and, and have the same representation. We're not going different. I did like how Wes was pointing out the difference between lobbyists. One is completely different than the other and a federal, uh, federal funding, uh, if you guys were there, they're just giving away money. They said it's free. So we just have to reach out and get some of it. Was happy to see Big Brothers and Sisters got money, but they're the only ones that got money. And thank you for at least getting that for Lyon County. Most of the people that we went and talked to in the different departments and everything else, not only did they recognize the Porter Group, but they'd call them out by name. Oh, you work with John on this one? Okay. Or whoever the name was. They knew him. I mean, it was like you, you had the doors open. I would consider this as more of access. A big, to where if, if we were doing it on our own, ha- hired an independent person to go up there and do it, they don't have the access they do. That's, that's the biggest thing that they have is the access. Another thing is, is no matter how hard we try to apply for something, they double check and make sure you, all the boxes get checked correctly. Because you could have a perfect project, everything else that fits, but if you don't work hand in hand with the staff up there, the people that are, are trying to move it forward in Congress. If, if it, if they can't check right real quickly and say, yep, all boxes are checked, it gets moved. The ones that get checked, move on. So they know exactly what they're looking for, how to move something forward. It's like, I know how to build a house, but some people don't. And so you can't say, okay, we all have the same tools. We're going to come up building a house. It's not going to happen. I'm personally going to vote yes on this. I'll even make the motion if, uh, when it comes to it. I just think it's an investment more than anything else. Uh, Fernley went with a six-month period. I, I cautioned him on that a little bit because six months gets you in the door, doesn't get you to the project. The project, we're not going to see a return on this and don't, don't have high hopes on getting, next week we want something. These, these, the process takes like 16 months. At the end of this contract is when we're going to start seeing something. So it, it takes a long time.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hocken. Um, a couple of things and obviously, um, in chatting with, uh, Miss Commissioner Henderson, uh, about, about some of this, uh, it very exciting. And then they hear Commissioner Keller and, and of course, uh, our county manager asking a, a couple of questions. So the city of Fernley went in. It still seems like Lyon County is Lyon County. Why is it that we're not teaming with Urington, Fernley and Lyon County to pool our money into this hundred and twenty thousand dollar pot and fight for all of the county? Um, that would be my first question is a cost savings and maybe we work together on these projects because we're still one county. I don't get why Urington would fork out a hundred and twenty grand, firmly a hundred and twenty grand and Lyon County fork out a hundred and twenty grand. That's 360,000 when we should be fighting for all the same projects. And maybe that's not how it works. I don't know. Uh, so that's, uh, that's just a curiosity on my part. And then, um, I'm guessing that down the road, um, and I'm going to be voting for yes for this too. So I'm not, if I'm sounding negative, I, I don't want it to be. I'm just trying to think outside the box a little bit. And then, um, the other one is any businesses that come in that benefit from this Porter Group's actions in Washington DC? Is there a way that we can attach a $2,500? A set, a fee or anything, and I just throwing out 2,500. I, I don't have a secret calculator that would go towards offsetting, uh, their, their fees because their, their business is directly benefiting from the actions of the Porter Group. So uh, there's some thoughts. I don't know.
All right. So, um, first part of your question, why we don't partner with, um, the two cities in or in the county.
Fight for it is Lyon County, not as.
You, you hit the nail on the head. Um, they're going to have different projects that they're going to be, they're going to be fighting for. And so it, it's actually better that we're separate because you have the ability to apply for a lot more projects. And, um, if we were all applying as one, we're going to be fighting for the, the priorities and who gets that top, top priority, um, which projects are going to move forward? We'd have to meet and figure that out. That it would get pretty messy pretty quick. Um, I mean, you saw we have about $23 million in projects that we put in. And I know when talking with Mr. Burketa and his capital improvement plan, he's got about $50 million on the water side and $50 million on the wastewater side over the next five years and improvements. So if we were also trying to, um, compete with, with the two cities, that would, um, that would potentially create an issue there.
I guess I was thinking that we compete with them, not against them. So.
Yeah, but, but I mean, but they run their own utilities, right? They run their own road departments. Um, they're going to have their own priorities. And, and so I totally understand where you're coming from. Um, it's just actually this way. I think the, the county as a whole and the two cities were likely to get more projects funded. And, uh, I, I think that, um, again, if you look at it as a percentage of what you're getting back, what you have the potential to get back, I should say. It's not a guarantee. Then, uh, I think that.
Right. You know, that's good. Yeah. The horse is dead. You can get off. So.
Sorry.
That's all right. You're done with that.
Oh, assessment of possible, uh, additional fee to businesses coming in that may benefit greatly from the Porter Group's work.
Um, I, I would have to take a look at NRS and see. I don't believe there's any mechanism in NRS that would allow us to do that, um, because, um, NRS empowers the county to, to, on which fees we can charge.
No special assessment.
I think that would be tough. Plus it would be di- difficult to determine well, who, who benefits from this. I mean, in the future, I plan on trying to go after funds for some of our wastewater or our stormwater projects that we have like in Dayton. Um, I, I took a look at trying to do that this time, but we just aren't far enough along. These projects that I put forward are. Um, and so, um, I think that, um, it, it would be difficult to say, okay, well, who, who benefited from that? When it really benefits the whole, the whole county. So.
Roger that. So, so back to, back to your horse. One of the things by having separate, two different things, we can still go together like on the lands bill. But, but if they, uh, say like we decided to bring in, uh, public people into the lands bill and they wanted to, uh, just keep it to the city, there'd be a conflicting way we were moving forward. But if we're both going one way, then we can combine them. So, so there's, there's pros and cons to, to accomplish it. And another thing I wanted to point out too, there was the, the phasing, how they, most of that stuff was, uh, we're, we're looking at a big thing, but they want, Washington wants us to have a project that, that we can keep going with. So we can, they can get a little bit here, a little bit there, and they keep giving back to their constituents. They don't look for the one big time project as much as the phases. So we can keep going, deplete an area and then come back the next year and, and keep going.
Absolutely. And by the way, I appreciate, I don't remember who brought up the Lance Bill originally. I didn't put that in my presentation, but that is something that if we do plan to move forward with, we will need representation. And we'll move without.
Further comments, questions? So it's, it's my turn here. Uh, first of all, I'm glad that I recommended you go to DC. You came back pretty excited about money. Did you hear that, Mr. Foley?
He's heard it.
Yeah. Uh, so you know, at, at first I'm thinking, nah, do we really need to spend a lot of money on, uh, on, on this group? But, um, having heard your discussions or about your discussions with people back there, um, I can appreciate the amount of money that's back there that will be handed out. Say it's, I guess it's free money. We've already paid the government, uh, some, some of it. So I do appreciate your enthusiasm on this. That's, uh, you know, it is, it is a lot of money. I believe that with the money that is available, that it will become pretty much a small issue in the long run. So I've pretty much gone from, I don't think it's a good idea to your enthusiastic discussion of now, I think it is a good idea. And, uh, so I will look for a motion. Well, actually, do we have any public input now? In-house? Anybody on Zoom? Doesn't look like it. Oh, okay.
Cameron Gresh.
Vita Keller, you're up.
Yeah. I just wanted to comment on Commissioner Jacobson's, um, thought process because I was sitting here thinking exactly what he was saying. And so, uh, we were very much in tune today, Rob.
Sorry. I am so sorry.
Right? I know. Anyways, um, my apologies that maybe I was, you know, thinking too hard and inflicted that on you. I just wanted to kind of throw it out there as a possibility. And I understand not teaming together. But you know, since Fernley is doing it and Lyon County is doing it with the Porter Group, maybe do a shared percentage discount to both Fernley and Lyon County since he got, they got both. So just a suggestion.
Thank you. I have Commissioner Keller again.
I just wanted to see if Cameron wanted to, to say anything or introduce himself at all or.
Where are the congressman? Yeah.
Oh, I didn't see the congressman.
The set big white building.
No, he's getting big. Well, John.
Not sure. Are, are we communicating? Can you hear me? Okay?
We can hear you.
Fine.
Uh, it's really great to see everyone. Chairman, thank you for your courtesies. I'm honored to be considered to be a part of the family, uh, Lyon County. Uh, quickly background, I, I served at, some of you may know as a city councilman, mayor of Boulder City for all, almost a decade. And I admire you in local government. It's the most difficult job that I've ever had. And I say that respectfully. And would, of course, wouldn't hesitate to do it again if, if you had the opportunity, but I, I applaud you for your service. Also, I served in the Nevada State Senate, so I spent a lot, for eight years. So I spent a lot of time, uh, in your neighborhood and then honored most recently to be a member of Congress, serving, uh, of course, the Southern Nevada District, but as a member of the Nevada delegation. Uh, I'm really proud of our team and you know, you know, Wes, I appreciate working with you in different capacities as well for so many years with the League of Cities. And of course now we're as active with the counties and the cities. Uh, we, we just bring the heart and soul of a Nevada corporation. Uh, having served Nevada, uh, we're here to help and there's a lot going on that needs your attention that we help you with, and we'd be proud to represent you here more formally. And I know Cameron is on the phone as well. Uh, Cameron, I'm not sure if you're are on yet, but maybe Cameron say a few words.
All right. I think I should be, um, coming in loud and clear. Uh, thank you, uh, commissioners. Um, it would be our pleasure, uh, to represent Lyon County out here in DC. I greatly enjoyed learning about all of your infrastructure priorities on which I am excited to make great progress in the coming weeks through the CPF processes Andrew mentioned earlier. Uh, Commissioner Henderson, it was my pleasure to learn about, um, everything the county has going on and to think through all of the pots of money that other Nevada municipalities, um, with our guidance have accessed in previous appropriation years. And we're very excited um, to bring you into this same federal fold of infrastructure funding, uh, the likes of which we haven't seen, uh, at this scale since the end of World War II. So thank you very much, um, for considering us today, uh, Lyon County Board of Commissioners, and it would be our pleasure to represent you here in Washington.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Any other comments? Public comments, no further comments, then, uh, I'll be looking for a motion on this.
Make a motion.
Okay. Commissioner Keller, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve a 16th month contract with the Porter Group LLC for federal government affairs consulting services. The contract amount is a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars per month, plus allowable travel expenses with 30,000 to be funded from contingency for the remainder of the fiscal year 2023.
Second.
Hey. Motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. So we have five zero, motion passes. Okay. We're going to go to 18B for possible action. Appoint county commissioners and staff to following boards, commissions or committee for calendar year 2023. This was of course pushed until we had a fifth commissioner from the January first meeting in January. So I'm going to go ahead. Grab with my right hand. Can't do it with my left. Um, real, really quickly, I've, uh, read the item, but, uh, just wanted to read the directions. As for a policy, the chairman will begin the process by asking the board members if there are any members interested in participating. In the event, only one commissioner is interested in serving on a committee, board or commission, then the chair will make the appointment. In the event that two or more members of the commission want to serve, then the chair will entertain a motion and second to make that appointment. A simple majority vote is required to approve the appointment. Upon completion of the appointment process, I will then again entertain a motion to approve the entire process. So that's basically what we're going to be looking at here today. So I, I, yes.
Uh, sorry to interrupt Chairman Hocken. May I make a suggestion that if we have more than one uh, person interested in one of these, that we give the floor to each one that might be interested so that they can, uh, kind of, um, explain why they're interested. And then we, we move forward rather than just with a quick uh, nomination and vote. Is that, is that doable for you, sir?
Uh, i- if the rest of the commissioners feel that that's, uh, okay. I see Commissioner Hendricks shaking her head. Commissioner Henderson?
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Henderson's good. That's three out of five. So it doesn't matter what we think. Uh, Commissioner Keller, good for you. Sure. All right. And it's good for me. So, um, what I would like to do to kind of go, go ahead.
Sorry. I, I, I just have one comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, nevermind. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, as, as I said, this is, is a board process. I know that in the past we've said, oh, the, the, the chair picks everybody. Well, according to the policy, no. We make the process work for the commission. Uh, so one of the things that I thought we might do is just kind of go down through the people who already have the jobs. And if you're still interested, you're going to be taking that position. And if there's someone who wants to run for that position, then they can just say, I want to run for that also. Taking that position, and if there's someone who wants to run for that position, then they can just say, I want to run for that also, right? Um, we know that uh, the begin with Comstock Historic District, Commissioner Gray is gone. And so we're looking at someone that would like to have that job. Uh, do I have anybody on that job would like to have that job? Commissioner Hendricks.
I would take that.
Okay, is there anybody else? This way, when you kind of go through where there is no competition, get the job filled in, then go back.
Just, 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 just a point on the spreadsheet here. I believe Ken Gray was suggested for the Dayton Valley. Conservation District, not the Comstock Historic District.
Right, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
The way I, so the way I worded the agenda item, it has to be staff or commissioners that, that are appointed today. It's not for anybody else. So, uh, if the board wishes to.
I was gonna get to that when we.
Okay.
Because first of all, yes, you're, you're correct on the actual. Um.
Board.
Board there. Um. Gray was.
Yes.
Okay, but that was not where a letter came in.
Uh, yeah, right, right.
The letter came in for Dayton Valley Conservation District. So as soon as I get to that, I'll go ahead and bring up the issue on that one.
Oh, I'm ready.
Yeah, okay.
One more, he separately requested to me um, on the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District as well. So again, we can't make that appointment today. Um, if the board does wish to do that at some point, uh, we would have to bring.
Well, and I, and I thought we would bring that up to the board as to whether we want to press on with a commissioner taking a position because we do have priority.
Yeah.
And if they decide not, okay, we'll let him do it. And, and I was gonna kind of explain that when we got down to item three there.
Sorry.
Um, so at this point, the first item there, I have Commissioner Hendricks. Is there anybody else that wants to? Uh, request that position for Comstock Historic District?
Makes sense, she's in Dayton.
Absolutely. Okay, so that one is good, no competition. Uh, debt management commission is uh, our Commissioner Jacobson. Um. Do you still wish?
Sure.
Anybody want to compete for that position? All right. I'm just gonna fill in here. Uh, now we get to the Dayton Valley Conservation District. We did receive, the county received, I received personally a letter. Uh, requesting uh, Commissioner Gray uh, stay on the Dayton Valley Conservation District. However, as I was gonna bring up, that is a board decision, that's not my decision. If somebody on the board says, you know, I really would like to have that position, then I feel the commissioners are.
Chairman Hocken, I think we should fill it with somebody on our board.
Mr. Chair, I agree. I don't think. I, I think these, these positions need to be filled by current elected or appointed officials of Lyon County. I don't want to set a precedent of. Having other people certainly in these positions.
Okay. That's, that's what I'm looking for is board input.
I think Tammy or Wes would be great, Chairman Hocken.
Okay.
I, I would be more than happy to serve on that.
Right? Commissioner Hendricks.
No, that's fine.
You're, okay. So we've got Henderson on that one.
I didn't catch what she said. She.
She was interested, yeah.
Both, both are interested.
No, well, no, no, she said she was fine with.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, I just marking the little thing here and I didn't hear.
If you, yeah, again, if you don't hear what's going on the other end, let's make sure everybody's clear.
Okay, so that was Dayton.
That was the uh, Dayton Valley Conservation District and will be Commissioner Henderson. Uh, Mason Valley Conservation District, you know, it's in my district. I have no problem keeping that unless somebody else wants to drive down and. At the two meetings in one day. All right, so I'm gonna keep that one and the same thing with Smith Valley Conservation District. Any competition on that? But you want to do a lot of driving? Fine. Um, Nevada Association of Counties Board of Directors, I would say I am interested in getting involved. And NACO Board of Directors, um, anybody else?
Yes, I, I, I am too. I've, you know, I've been the alternate for the last couple of years. I would like to be the primary to the Board of Directors.
And I'm also interested.
Okay. Right. Then. Um, what we'll do here is. Since it has to be a majority vote. If we have a nomination, again, if it's nominated, gain three votes, then we would go ahead and. Uh, move on. So the three at this point would be uh, myself, Commissioner Keller and Commissioner Henderson. So.
Commissioner Hocken, since I don't necessarily have a horse in the race, um, I'm, I would like to nominate uh, Wes Henderson for this position. He's very. Um, he's been heavily involved with NACO through the years. Um, and uh, as an alternate, I feel like uh, it, it only makes sense.
Okay, so we have a nomination, we have a second for that nomination.
I'll second.
Okay, you, you're allowed. Um. So all those in favor of Commissioner Henderson being on the Board of Directors, uh, moving from alternate to primary. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so we have, I'm gonna go ahead and vote for uh, Commissioner Henderson. So it's three. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Okay. So it does go three. We'll go ahead and do that one. Um, we've had an alternate. So. Um. I would say if Commissioner Keller wants to be alternate, would you like to be the alternate, Commissioner Keller?
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine. All right. So we have Commissioner Henderson and Keller on that. Um, moving to the Legislative Committee.
I definitely would like to stay.
Okay, I have Commissioner Henderson. And any others?
Yes.
So, uh, quick question for you, uh, Chairman Hocken, sir. Additional appointment to the Legislative Committee, does that mean there's two on there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so if there's no one else interested, I would like to make a nomination that Wes and Scott fill those positions. Commissioner Henderson, excuse me, and Commissioner Keller.
Okay. Um. I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, we're good on that.
Um, regarding the next one, Chairman Hocken, just for the speeding it up, these meetings are on Fridays, and that is the one. Day during the week where I am unable to get on the Zoom. I am traveling with my kids and sports, and I have got to bow out of that one. I didn't realize that the majority of their meetings were Fridays.
Uh, uh, actually, they've been moved to Thursdays.
Oh. Well, then I would be interested in staying. But if somebody else wants it.
That's a public lands and natural resources.
Yeah, I would be fine.
All right, and I did go back.
And I have for coyote hunting.
There was a question uh, about that. I did go back and look at twenty twenty-one. And then I compared to twenty twenty-two and made sure that the, that you two were in fact, that, that, that people on there. Um, there was, as I said, there was a question about it, that, that this is correct as written. So do we have anybody that wants to compete for those two positions?
I'm interested in the public lands.
More than happy to step off.
Yeah, I'd like to be on the public lands too.
Okay. So we've got basically. Three, you want to step?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll stress.
Scott. Or Commissioner Keller and Commissioner Hendricks.
All right, so you're willing to step out to also, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got those two, so it's gonna be Keller and Hendricks. Moving along quite well. Local Emergency Planning Committee, would anybody be interested in uh, competing with me on that position? I guess I've got it. Um, Northern Nevada Development Authority, we need someone to step up for that. Uh, that was Vita Keller before.
I'd still, I'd go with that.
Okay.
In NDA.
That one, there's um, two, two, so I would like the other.
Yeah, and I had that down there because Paige was on it before, so we do have that taken care of then. Uh, that'll be Keller and. And Haskin. Then Nevada Works was Vita, and do we have anybody stepping up for that one? No, no, nobody gonna do it?
Uh, if nobody else is interested, I'll step up.
Okay, Scott, you weren't interested. Commissioner Hendricks, you weren't interested. All right.
That's another one that Jeff was on.
Yep, I, we kind of have that down. Uh, so we have Jacobson on that one. And Haskin. Uh, Walker River Irrigation District, my area, anybody interested in competing for that one? All right, I guess I'm it again. Carson Water Sub Conservancy District.
I'd like to do that.
Okay, the competition.
Which one is it?
That was the uh, Car- Carson Water Sub Conservancy District, Ken Gray had it previously. Okay, so.
I'm all right with that, yeah.
You, you want that?
No, I, okay, I, I think I'll be attending them anyway, and uh, but then we'll get both. Input from both.
All right.
That way, I can keep a hands length difference.
Commissioner Hendricks will be that selection, Lyon County Room Tax Board.
I'd be interested in that if nobody else is.
Any competition? Okay.
On that one, we need an alternate too.
I'll go with an alternate. That's just a twice a year, right? Once a year and twice a year. Twice a year.
Once a year, I believe.
All right, so we've got Jacobson and Keller. Quarterly jail inspection, I guess I'm on that. Anybody would like to do that? It's, it's a lot of fun, quarterly uh, paperwork.
I would like to, I would like to attend one, just walk through with you sometime. I, I'm. You've done a great job, and I'm not looking to replace you. I, I did take a tour of the jail, and I would like to. Do it again, and might as well do it rather than wasting the, the jail's time um, with two of us. So just if you think of it, let me know, and I'd love to attend with you, Mr. Hocken.
Sure, you sure you don't want it?
That's it.
I nominate Rob.
All right.
No, um. Commissioner, Chairman Hocken, they still have it.
Still me. Thank you very little. Okay, um, Truckee Canal Safety Commission, that was Commissioner Jacobson. Um, looks like it might be. In your ballpark.
I would like to attend. I've been to some of the court hearings and all that stuff, so.
Anyone else interested?
Yeah, Vita was the alternate on that before. Can you explain what, because that isn't the Truckee, uh, it's not the irrigation district, it's just the court.
Well, I've, I've attended some TCID meetings and, and that, but to say we've met. Or to say they've called a meeting, I have. Yet to be notified of anything, so.
We'll look into that.
So I'd like to be the alternate on that, and uh, but I'd like to get notified. As an alternate, I could sit in the audience, so at least.
Or if I can't make it, you'd be there as well. So I agree, I think, I don't know. You know, I, I aside from attending TCID, um. Events or court hearings or proceedings or any of that, that's.
Well, I'll, I'll work with Aaron and more.
Yeah, I just wanted to know more about that.
Okay.
That board, because it's not TCID board. It's completely different.
So at, at current time, our appointments will be Jacobson and Keller. Jacobson, that's what I got down here. I'm just making sure we're, we're on track. Uh, next one will be Lyon, Lyon County Regional Transportation Committee. That was Commissioner Henderson.
That's me. I'd be happy to stay or I'd be happy to get somebody else.
Would somebody else be interested in that position? Commissioner Henderson is willing to give it up. Okay, and he stays that. Um, Quad County Legislative Coalition, we've already done that one. Uh, assignments were myself and Commissioner Henderson. So we're going to move on to Carson Area Metro Planning Organization, that was Commissioner Henderson.
And I would like to stay with that.
Any competition for that position to Commissioner Henderson? All right, State and State Land Use Planning Agency, same thing, Commissioner Henderson.
Yes, and I would like to stay with that as well.
Any competition to that?
And actually, my governor's appointment to that is actually through twenty-four.
Okay. So that one stays the same. Uh, Nevada Local Justice Reinvestment Coordination Council. Commissioner Gray had that. Um, anybody interested in signing on to that appointment?
We get a little explanation on what that is.
Explanation.
I, uh.
District Attorney Ry, would you happen to know in the Nevada Local Justice Reinvestment Coordination Council? Okay. Yeah. Thank you, that helped a lot. Um, Nevada Commission of the Aging. I'll do, no, I'm not gonna take.
I do that.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Any, any competition on that one?
Chairman Hocken, I think you and I are too old for that. It's a conflict of interest.
Yeah. All right, so I have uh, Commissioner Hendricks for the Commission of the Aging. Did we get any input back on the?
He's still looking.
Okay, still looking. So we get down to the Intergovernmental Executive Committee, and I believe we had input from the Intergovernment. Executive Committee on how we're supposed to proceed on that.
Um, so it's, it's gotta be a commissioner, um, it's through uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And there's only one, uh, one.
Yeah, and, and the reason I bring that up.
One appointment for me.
One appointment for.
We had two before.
An alternate.
Yeah, we had an alternate.
Yeah, we had an alternate, but.
We had an alternate.
Um, I didn't miss it.
Now, the reason I was gonna bring that up was I think, Aaron, you had something that was directive on that.
Yeah, they need someone that can actually, actually, but can make decisions for Lyon County, so that you need. A board member such as yourself that can make, take those actions. Last year, from memory, the reason why there is an alternate is because Ken wanted to be appointed to it, so you only have to appoint one person, but you can send two.
Okay. And, and that's what I want brought up, is that they really wanted somebody, because I know we've made a decision that we're gonna make it commissioners. But we were also directed basically, when I did look up their, their requirements. It was just that we can pick somebody from the county, but then with the additional information, we get back to needing to have a commissioner.
Well, then I have a question.
Yeah.
Because a commissioner can't make a decision for Lyon County. County manager can. To, to some degree, but a single commissioner cannot.
Right.
Without prior board action.
And I think that's part of the input that they would have.
I do think their bylaws said commissioner, though. Yeah, their bylaws do say commission.
It's basically with a name.
This was the foul, the one on. This is the Fallon expansion that, that, that every other county around us got something out up at us.
But anyway, I'd like to be on that one. Uh, now that I realize it's the Carson Range Expansion.
And it's up in your neck of the woods and part of mine.
And to give you, I've, I've sat in on every one of those meetings so far, and uh. Bless you.
Thank you.
Anyway, it's, it's the expansion in Silver Springs. It's on the backside of that.
Okay, so if the board would like, I could serve as the alternate. That way the county manager is there as well.
That's perfectly fine with me.
Me as well.
Yes, it would be Keller and. Haskin. Do what? Yep. All right, any other competition on that? So now we have information about the Nevada Local Justice Reinvestment Coordination Council.
Yeah, not a lot of information. The uh, Steve Ry District Attorney. I recall when this came up, I think it's only been a couple of years ago, the legislature enacted some legislation for this. And it's to get local uh, government and local involvement in. Uh. Criminal justice issues. The purpose stated on the website is the Nevada Local Justice Reinvestment. Coordinating Council advises and assists the Nevada Sentencing Commission. In making data driven, driven policy recommendations to Nevada's legislature. By providing input on and recommendations regarding various criminal justice issues. And matters that are important at the local level, as stated in NRS one seven six point zero one four subsection three.
Chairman Hocken, I'd like to nominate Steve Ry for this position. Chairman Hockaday, I'd like to nominate Steve Rye for this position.
Yeah, so it does, um. What the statute says, and I'll, I'll address that in a minute. Uh, advise the sentencing commission on matters related to any legislation, reg- regulation. Rules, budgetary changes, all other actions needed to implement the provisions of chapter six thirty-three. Statutes in Nevada twenty nineteen as they apply to local government. Identify county level program and in treatment needs for person and persons involved in the criminal justice system. Make recommendations to the sentence, sentencing commission regarding grants to local governments and nonprofit organizations. Oversea the implementation of local grants, create performance measures to assess the effectiveness of the grants. And identify opportunities for collaboration with the Department of Health and Human Services. At the state and county level for treatment services and funding. Um, the members on the board are a little bit varied depending on the county. Um, the Carson. Uh, the chair of the committee is Carson City Deputy District Attorney. Uh, from uh, Churchill County, there's Brenda Ingram, who is Court Services Director. These are just some examples. Um, Douglas County has a deputy district attorney. Uh, Elko County has a county commissioner, a former county commissioner. Um, let's see. Lander County has a county commissioner. Uh, Ken Gray, I believe, was the Lion County Representative. Um, Mineral County has a county commissioner, Pershing County has the district attorney, so it is varied on who's appointed to that. Position.
Chairman Hockaday, my motion stands.
So we, we have a nomination for District Attorney Ry. Um, how often does that meet?
It looks like in. Uh, twenty twenty-two, there were four meetings.
Basically, quarter.
I would be interested to know if Commissioner Jacobson would. Consider changing the nomination to um, the district attorney or his designate.
Well, I would like to nom- yes, I would like to nominate the District Attorney's Office to represent Lion County.
Being an elected official, we'll bring that back to you because you make your decisions based on what you need or your office needs. Would that be appropriate for you?
Yeah, that's appropriate for me and I'll let the board know who that person is.
Okay. And we are going to, you know, as they say, a task passed is a task complete.
That's right.
That will be a. I think we've gotten through the list. Uh, thank you for the input. And what we need to do now is have a motion to approve the entire list as, as uh. Developed here.
Chairman.
Yes.
Well, Chairman Hock, Hockaday, I, I, I'm not gonna make a motion because someone may want to, but I'm, I'm ready to. But in my three years of doing this, I think this was the, the uh. I don't want to say civil because I won't say any of them were not civil, but I thought this was uh, the smoothest, most cooperative. Um, committee assignment session that I've attended in three years. So I want to thank my fellow commissioners.
I, I also want to thank the Commissioners for getting through this. Um, what I would look for then would be any public comment, any other questions from everybody? No comments, nothing anywhere on Zoom or in, in chambers? Um, are you coming up to make a comment, District? Okay. So then I will look for that motion.
I did, Mr. Chair, I moved that we make the committee assignments as, as discussed and on the. On the spreadsheet, it was provided.
Okay. And uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Hey, I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson and that was Commissioner Jacobson, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Do we have a five oh on that?
Chairman Hockaday, if I may, um, can I ask if we get maybe a calendar made up of dates that we know of? Committee meetings, I don't know if that's possible or not, but just a little bit of heads up or if that, are they not planned?
We can, we can make a calendar of the ones we know.
All right, I, that would help me out significantly.
Yeah, yeah, happy to do that.
So the calendar with.
Yeah.
Gates, all right. I just had a question on clarification for a second, so um. That takes care of item eighteen B. And now we are looking for eighteen C, which is for possible action to prove a settlement agreement dated November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Walmart settlement with Walmart subdivision participation form related to the opioid litigation. And authorize the chair to sign the necessary documents to implement the settlement to Lion County in Nevada. Um, so we have District Attorney Ry. Going to talk about the settlement agreement and our participation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Steve Rye, Lion County District Attorney. Andrew asked me to pre- present this item that it could go under the DA. Uh, Human Services County Manager, the Comptroller, but we, we just put it under the County Manager Cabinet this time. Uh, this is part of the opioid litigation, as the board knows, the, the county employed an attorney. A couple of years ago to represent the county in various cases. This was a national settlement that was reached in sort of a class action. And uh, the attorney for the county and the Attorney General's Office is recommending that the county agree to the settlement attached to the packet. Today is the settlement breakout by municipality in Nevada. Lion County will receive about two hundred and eighty-four thousand plus in this Walmart settlement. Those funds would go in the uh, the opioid fund, which is uh, under Shava's control now. And she has a plan for the, the money this year and she'll be adjusting that as time goes by and more money. Uh, comes in and she figures out what that program looks like going forward. Uh, but this money would augment that fund and be part of the program over the next couple of years as the money became available. So today, we're asking that you approve the settlement, authorize the chairman to sign the participation form, I think is the only document that needs to be signed right now. And forward that on to the Attorney General's Office to process that second. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Questions, Commissioner Hendricks, Commissioner Jacobson, Commissioner Keller, Commissioner Henderson. Um, my understanding is it's gonna be over a six-year period, first two payments could be in the first year, I think it was. Okay, I'm just making sure because you know, reading through all the contract stuff. Uh, seeing how that works, but uh, was it two, two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars and change?
That's what it looks like in the, the alloc- initial allocation.
Okay, so um, any other questions then, then I will open it up to any type of public input, public comment. Kind of cleared out the room here. If there isn't any other comment, then I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I moved that we approve a settlement agreement dated November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. With Walmart and subdivision participation form related to the opioid litigation. And authorize the chair to sign the necessary documents to implement the settlement for Lion County.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson made the motion, Commissioner Hendricks seconded. I will now ask for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Oh, aye.
Any opposed? Five oh vote. And we'll, we'll move on. Thank you, District Attorney Ry. Uh, looks like community development or possible action. We already did that one. So I get to turn the page. I can get there with my left hand. We're at twenty.
Aye.
Agenda requests, uh, move from Commissioner Hendricks.
Not at this time.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would like to make a request. I know it's not gonna be for a few meetings because staff's gonna have to do some work on this. But I would like an agenda item uh, to propose an ordinance restricting the, the use of ornamental grass. But prohibiting it actually.
Prohibiting ornamental grass.
Yeah, there's all these laws, we live in the desert.
You smoke that?
That's not ornamental.
Um, Commissioner Jacobson, any agenda request?
Well, thank you, Chairman. Um, Hockaday, a couple things. And I don't know if they're agenda requests or just look into, but at last night's um. Stagecoach Advisory, I was a little bit troubled to hear that in our public, in that. Fire station, the Forge Club was charged a deposit. I don't know that they did any damage. To the facilities whatsoever. I don't know how they could have done any damage to it. But I don't know if they got their deposit back. And are we responsible to provide because it was in there? Should we in good faith? I, I don't know. I, I, I struggle. I struggle with the fact that they were charged a deposit. All the organizations for that matter, and I couldn't see any damage. I don't, I thought a deposit was not a. Charge or a fee. It was if you, at the end of your use. Didn't trash the place, you got your deposit back. And it sounds like whoever collected those absconded with the money maybe or whatever. I, I'm just, I'm, I'm just wondering about that. So I don't need an answer today or anything, but you can.
It may not be a, an agenda request, but I will, um, we will look into it with, um.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's just taking money from people, right? So I, I, it just, it just rubbed me wrong. I, I actually thinking on the way home last night, I was like, wait a minute, did I just hear that right? And then, um. Um, as mentioned earlier, um, regarding uh, residents here and in Urrington about. Uh, is there anything our board can do to put more teeth into keeping up property? Um, I don't, I don't know if there is or not, uh, to help code enforcement or to help our sheriff. I don't know if there is. The gentleman's suggestion was the former committee. I'm not a committee guy. I dated a gal once. It was made by a committee. She was a rather tall gal that was short, had blonde hair with brunette roots and et cetera, so. I, I, I don't think we need a committee, but I do think that if they need more teeth. In that po- uh, whatever, I say our board supports those code enforcement people.
Perfect.
Commissioner Keller, no. That brings me to, uh, I, I would like to, and it doesn't necessarily have to be at the next meeting, depending on how short the agenda is or long it is. But at some point before the weather gets nice, which could be July. Um, I'd like to discuss the uh, Lion County lease agreement for the Smith Valley Rodeo Grounds. Because basically, if we go by what it says here, we wouldn't have anybody be able to use it at the prices that we're charging for. High school groups and other groups, uh, but um, that would be a, a, a great interest to me. And that would be with the facilities uh, manager. And so that's something, as I said, next meeting or the meeting after. Anything else on agendas? Okay, then we will move on to Commissioner Comments, item twenty-one. Let's go from Commissioner Jacobson.
Um, thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I just, uh, there's a STEM Festival tonight at Friendly High School. Bring your kids down. It's, there's gonna be wonderful exhibits. Um, that make them think, maybe see some career opportunities. Um, check out. Over a hundred uh, STEM Festival projects uh, that were made by the kids. So that's at Friendly High School. I'll be cooking nitrate sickles or hot dogs, I mean. And uh, you'll get supper and veggie chips, soda, whatever. And uh, also I want to wish Eric Melva. I always screw up his name. Miloski? Well, I um, served us well and, and did a great job through some really difficult uh, situations this year in particular. So I want to thank Eric.
Commissioner Keller, Commissioner Hendricks.
Um, I just wanted to ask, um, if maybe Andrew could speak to the Planning Commission and see if any of them would be interested in some training? And if so, if we could make that happen for him so that they can have more information.
Commissioner.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, I just wanna. Say, uh, I've en- I've enjoyed today's meeting. When, when I first got the thousand sixty-six page agenda, I wasn't sure I was going to. But um, I think every, everybody worked together very well and, and I'm looking forward to continuing with this board.
Thank you, um. Just real quick, uh, Silver Springs has a craft fair and bake sale. March eleventh, nine AM to two PM at uh. Hmm, like the, what, Senior Center, yep. And uh, night at the Senior Center for Bingo, which is on March eighteenth, I believe. Um, just.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You just reminded me of something that I wanted to.
Go ahead.
Just put out there, the uh, Dayton Senior Center's Taco Tuesday is next Tuesday. Eight dollars for tacos and this is for a fundraiser for the, for the senior center. So come on up to Dayton and get some tacos.
Only if Wilson Canyon's open. The uh, the next thing is I did want to also thank Eric for a fantastic job as HR. Um, always could depend on excellent advice and we are gonna miss him. Hopefully, we can find somebody of his caliber to replace him. Uh, other than that, I think I will call it quits for the day and, well, not quite. I gotta stay till. Till Wilson Canyon opens up. Um.
That's you.
Yeah, I think we've done our closed session for the day or do we get to have another one? Okay, thank you. Uh, item twenty-three, public participation. Our should be taken on any item until it's properly agendaized. It is unanticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public com- comment after discussion of each agenda item. But before the board takes any action, uh, do we have anybody on Zoom that wants the last word? No, okay, in chambers, we have.
I do, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, in chambers, we have uh, county manager.
Couple of things that I forgot to mention in my county manager report and Aaron was uh, kicking me over here when I sat back down, but uh. We have a cap training this Saturday, um, March fourth at eight thirty in Silver Springs, eight thirty in the morning. Um, it's required. For the caps, it is required for the caps um, to attend that meeting. We will be doing it via Zoom as well, so um. Yeah, if the, if the planning commission wants to attend, um, that's more inappropriate. Um, it'll be covering open meeting law and a number of other things, so.
And you're gonna send the Zoom link out to us as well?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we can do that. Yeah, so um, so that's important. Um, also, we are still accepting uh, through Monday, applications for the planning commission. So um, if you know anybody that needs to get their application in, please let us know. Monday is the last day on that, then we'll be, be bringing that back before the board. And then I did forget to um. Mention uh, Eric Miloski um, leaving Lion County. Um, or plan on doing something at the next port, so put as much. He has been amazing and so definitely want to recommend.
Uh, one, one last thing that I did forget, it was kind of buried in the thousand pages here. Uh, I would like to have a presentation and I will get with you on the contact information. For the uh, challenging uh, academy. Uh, Battleborn Youth Challenge Academy, I'm kind of associated with the National Guard and, and kids um. That are trying to get through hard times. I know we have China Lake, but um. Definitely, they, they reached out and would like to be able to either talk to me or the board, and I think it'd probably be good, be good for us to. Figure out what else is out there for our kids to make them successful. So that's, that's all I have. Um, unless somebody else has something to say before we hit this. We will be adjourned at three thirty-two.